Okay, Mr. Mayor, the live stream is going. We're ready to begin.
Okay. Good evening. Let's call to order the special council meeting study session and close session of May 9th, 2022. Before we get started, I'd like to remind participants of some procedural items for this meeting. During the meeting, participants will remain muted when not speaking. If participants have a question or a comment, please use the raised hand feature and speakers to be called upon to speak one at a time. The city council meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means as allowed by government code subdivision 54953E and resolution number 1089-21 reaffirmed by the Sunnyvale City Council on May 3rd, 2022. Members of the public may provide audio public comment by connecting to the teleconference meeting online or by telephone and use the raised hand feature request to speak, star nine on your telephone. Teleconference meeting details available on the council agenda. Captions are available to viewers accessing this meeting via Zoom. Captions can be displayed or hidden using closed caption button on the website or the live transcript button in Zoom. Following our board and commission interviews, a closed session on the conference with legal counsel pending litigation will begin shortly thereafter. We encourage the public to stay tuned if they would like to make a public comment on the closed session. First up was our roll call. City Clerk, may we please have roll call?
Mayor Klein.
Present.
Vice Mayor Cisneros.
President.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Hendricks. Councilmember Melton.
Present.
Councilmember Dean.
Present.
Councilmember Spitaleri.
Present.
Six present participating via teleconference, Councilmember Hendricks absent.
Thank you, and that was an excused absence from a message that I received from him. Let's go ahead and move on to our study session. Our one item is 22-0031, Board and Commission Interviews. Is there a staff report?
Yeah. Mayor Klein, it's Russ. Do you mind if I just jump in for a second? So I'm not 100% tonight. So here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to go into listen only mode. So I'll be listening to all the interview, but I'll have my camera and microphone off. And I want to thank all the applicants for applying, and then I'll catch up with my colleagues for the closed session later tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Hi, David Carnahan, the city clerk. So tonight council's going to conduct several interviews, and you have more tomorrow night. So you're interviewing a total of 22 candidates over two evenings. There are 18 vacancies on various boards and commissions in the city, and council is scheduled to make appointments to these various vacancies on May 24th. And tonight's interviews are scheduled for 15 minutes each.
Okay, I will go ahead and open the public comment, seeing no questions from council. Since we remain in a virtual setting, I will ask the public to use the virtual raised hand button or dial star nine on your telephone to indicate that they wish to speak. The city clerk will then ask you to unmute your microphone when it's your turn to address the council. City Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Let's go ahead and close the public comment. Council will be interviewing 13 candidates this evening. As in previous interview sessions, council questions will be done on a rotating basis, initially based on seniority. So we'll go through the mayor, vice mayor, and on, and then every candidate will shift by one. First up, City Clerk, are we ready with our first candidate?
Yes, your first candidate Kathy is being promoted to the panelist role. She should be rejoining momentarily.
Good evening.
Hi Kathy.
It looks like.
Evening, Your Honor.
Oh, there you go. Okay. Hi Kathy, welcome. Good to see you again. Thanks for your service on the Board of Library Trustees and for reapplying. Let me explain the process to you. Each council member will have an opportunity to speak and ask you a question. This interview is scheduled for 15 minutes, so please keep that in mind when answering questions. And if we have time at the end, you can ask us a question. So I'm up first. So thanks for, again, for serving on the Board of Library Trustees and also being, you know, president for the Friends of the Sunnyvale Library. You know, so I have, my main question is around the Lakewood Branch Library. So, you know, that will be opening in 2024, and how do you think that will change the requirements from library services from a city standpoint?
It's going to be a bit of a logistical jump, coordinating circulation programs and human resources between the two branches. At one point, it was debated whether or not it was going to be a full-service library or just a drop-off. But it looks like it's going to be a full-service library. But it's not going to have a completely separate collection, so the collection's going to have to go between the two. There's also a large event space planned, so that there's going to be a lot of coordination for speakers, panelists, attendees. There's some industrial safety requirements because there's a makers lab plan for it as well. So that's a whole other set of OSHA requirements to meet for a makers lab.
Right. And so, you know, any take on, so I appreciate that answer. You've actually spent a lot of time thinking about that, so definitely looking forward to when that opens up and adding that service into our city. Next up is Vice Mayor Cisneros.
Hi there Kathy, it's so good to see you. Hi, and thank you so much for the service that you've provided to the city already. And I'm just wondering, coming back to you being the president of the Friends of the Library and on the Board of Trustees, how has having both of those roles been complimentary or presented challenges while you've been on the board so far?
There hasn't been a whole lot of challenge. It's complementary because as a trustee, I get to see behind the scenes of the library, see what the demand is, how operations can be improved, the foot traffic, just logistic, a lot of logistics that goes into running a library and how we can make it better.
Great. I really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Larson.
Hi Kathy, good to see you over Zoom.
Good evening.
And I really appreciate all the work that you do through the Friends of the Library and also serving on the Board of Library Trustees. And I'm interested in your observations as we come back from COVID and the library had been closed for a while and it's reopened now. What changes have you seen? What have been your observations about kind of the process of coming back and where we are now?
We've had to be very flexible because as you can see from the progress of COVID, we'll open up something, then it'll get shut down again for COVID. So we've really seen programs that have to adapt to new technology, be available remote. There's a lot of reduced foot traffic to the library right now. That was actually one of the topics that was at a prior meeting, was the fact that viewership and visiting the library is still way down. So it's a lot. There's a lot of technical challenges to overcome. It's required the use of a lot of new technology, which is good because it reaches more people and a lot more people have access who normally wouldn't.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Dean.
Thank you, and hi Kathy. Thank you for reapplying. And I'll join in with all of my colleagues in saying thank you for your service thus far. My question is, when it comes to the last year that you've been on the commission and looking forward for the year to come, what's been the biggest challenge that you've seen, you know, the commission and the work they are doing face, and what do you perceive to be the biggest challenge that you'll need to deal with on the commission moving forward?
I think the biggest challenge we're going to have is still recovery from COVID because the situation is still so fluid and it's forced everybody to go in new directions. And you think you have the handle on the situation, and all of a sudden, things shift again, all over again. And so you really have to be flexible. I think that's going to be the library's biggest challenges, staying relevant and part of people's lives, especially if we have to go into another lockdown.
Definitely. I appreciate the thoughtfulness of this answer and all of the answers you've given thus far, so thank you.
Thank you, and next is Councilmember Spitaleri. You're muted, Tony.
We need little signs that say unmute.
There we go.
Yep.
Okay Kathy, hello, and nice to meet you.
Good evening, sir.
Based on the answers that you've given my colleagues, there's really not much more that I can ask. You seem to have a good grasp of the issues, you know, the situation developing, how you would work between two libraries, the issues of coming back after COVID. I think you're all excellent, so I really have no other questions other than thank you for your service and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, do you have any questions for us? Although, keep in mind, you might get five different answers. But while you have us here, is there anything you'd like to add?
I'm kind of used to that since I've been president of the Friends for over five years, and it looks like I'm going to stay that way because we don't have enough people to actually have formal elections. So I think that might be a challenge, is finding motivated people to actually go do things. I know the library is working with limited resources and changes in funding, that's always a change. And this has to be directed over here, so. I will say that the Library Commission has done wonderful job of, the meetings that I have attended have been just fantastic with what they're planning and going forward.
No, and I appreciate that. I do think that, you know, between the Friends and the Board of Library Trustees and of course staff, you know, helping out a little bit on both of those. I do appreciate, you know, how well that whole group works together, you know, planning things and funding and all that. And, you know, I know that definitely both make a big difference, both in the operations of the library as well as the multiple events and things that are helped funded by the Friends. So thank you for your service and thank you for your time as far as that's concerned. And always feel free to reach out to council if you have any questions and issues and as far as that's concerned.
Oh, one other note. I would like to thank yourself and several of the other council members for the information on the urgent grant. We actually did receive a grant for $5,000. It's going to be used for mobile sewing lab kits for home instruction. So we would like to thank you for pointing us in that direction.
Thank you very much. And yeah, it's always good to be able to find, you know, additional sources where we can. So that's fantastic. Glad, glad that that was approved. So thank you again for your interest tonight. A final decision will be made on Tuesday, May 24th. Of course, you don't need to be present when we vote, and the city clerk will then contact you after that meeting to inform you of the final outcome.
All right. Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
City Clerk, we're ready for our next candidate.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, give me just a moment. I'm troubleshooting with the next applicant. We'll have them on here momentarily.
Sounds good. Good evening, Jim.
Hello.
See if you can get your video.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Now I see you. There we go.
Oh, yes, this is nice.
Good. Hi Jim, glad to see you again. And of course, thank you for your service to the city as council member and of course on the Housing and Human Services Commission. Let me take a quick moment to explain our process. As I'm sure you know, each council member will have an opportunity to speak and ask you a question. This interview is scheduled for 15 minutes, so please keep that in mind when answering questions. And if you have time, well, you can ask us a question if you want. First up is Vice Mayor Cisneros.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi Jim, how are you?
Very well, thank you.
Good to hear, and thank you so much for, as the mayor said, your service to the city, both in your previous role on council and as your current role in commissioner. And so I have a question now that you've had some time to be a commissioner and you're not really familiar with, you know, our housing landscape. So give us some advice. As we go into the housing element process, what is something that council absolutely needs to be paying attention to that we may be missing?
Well, we need to start paying attention to the below-market rate housing. You know, we're looking at the housing element coming up, and we've seen what ABAG has sent us in regards to the numbers that they want us to achieve. And we have never achieved those numbers in the past. So we desperately have to try to do something to achieve that. I have sponsored two two issues from the Housing Human Services Commission. One, that we increase the percentage of below-market rate that we require builders to look at and build for us. And number two, we at this point take an extremely small amount of money in lieu fees. And I think that, you know, when it costs over $700,000 a unit to build, and we take a couple, $100,000, we're not really achieving anything. And so I've sponsored another issue asking that we increase the amount of money that we take from builders so that we can have something in our funds that is reasonable for us to help in building below-market rate.
All right. Thank you so much. I really appreciate that attention to something that is really hard. But I'm really glad that you and the commissioner are doing some great thinking around that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Larson.
Hi Jim, good to see you.
Mr. Larson, nice to see you.
Yes, so now that you've been on the Housing Commission for a year, I appreciate the two study issues that you just mentioned that you have sponsored. And I wanted to actually focus a little bit on the second one, on the in-lu fees. And first of all, when you're talking about in-lu fees, are you specifically talking about the housing in-lu fees, not like park dedication fees or those other?
Oh, yes, absolutely, the housing fees.
Okay. So council recently had a study session with staff about the housing element. And one of the things that staff mentioned is that our development fees in general are actually higher than a lot of the other cities around here, which is a bit of an impediment to building market-rate housing at least. So how does that fact fit in with increasing our housing in-lu fees? What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I'm really a little bit confused because of the fact that we looked at the amounts of money that we have in different funds and the, our advisors on the Housing Human Services have shown that, you know, we have approximately $1.2, $1.3 million in our housing mitigation funds. That doesn't, that doesn't do anything for us in regards to helping to build more below-market rate housing. And if we are higher than our competitors in other cities, then there is something wrong with the system, you know, and we need to take more recognition of the issue and again be leaders and push this even further. And it's not, it's not a problem. It's just located in Sunnyvale. It's a problem that all cities in the area are facing, you know, Washtata, Saratoga, Los Altos. They're all facing very similar issues. But Sunnyvale has a tremendous reputation, and we have the ability to be able to make things available for our developers. And so if they don't want to build, and we know that we have to reach certain goals, we need to do things to change what's happening.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Dean.
Thank you, and it's a pleasure to see you on here, Jim, and thank you so much for all of your service thus far. My question is, and as you know and we all know, one of the most important things that the Housing and Human Services Commission does is make recommendations on the allocations of our CDVG and block grants. And so to that effect, what do you think are some of the most important ways that that money has been used and should be continued to be used?
You know, I wish that I was more informed in regards to that so that I could answer your question more specifically. But my my memory in regards to what we discussed on the commission is sort of blanking out on me at this time.
Of course, no worries. I think it is a very technical question. I'm kind of throwing it at you here. And I will say we on council just went through reviewing it ourselves. And so to the entire commission, you guys do have our appreciation for what was coming before us.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Spitaleri.
Hello, Jim, former colleague and a council member.
Mr. Tony.
I'm not sure, but do you guys deal with the unhoused issue?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So what do you think as a city, what can we do more as a city than just necessarily, you know, relying on the county or the state to deal with users? Can we, do you have any thoughts that what we can do directly as a council into the issue?
Well, Tony, the biggest problem that the city of Sunnyvale has is we are extremely efficient in regards to allocating the funds that we have that are coming into our budget. And unfortunately, you know, one of the problems with that is our efficiency does not allow us to expand exponentially like we should. So unfortunately, we are at the behest of the county and/or the state to draw in funds or have them participate in things that'll help us with the unhoused population. Now, if we had more money in our budget, you know, to be able to do things, that would be great. Quite honestly, there's one project that caught my eye, oh, six or seven months ago. And I've been talking to some of our surrounding cities in regards to safe parking. And we have, we have a 14-acre plot of ground that is just exactly what we need to do a number of things. The safe parking, to do some housing mitigation, and also to start building some low-cost housing. But the city of Sunnyvale doesn't have the money to be able to purchase the property, but the county does. And so we need to collaborate with the county in regards to some of the unhoused issues. And unless we can find ways of garnering some more cash to be able to participate ourselves.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. And so Jim, I thank you for those that comment, the comments about partnering. I definitely agree. It's partnering with the county as well as the state to, and conceivably also the federal government to get appropriate funding for wherever we can, definitely dealing with the unhoused issue, I do think is important. Going back to something you talked about earlier, you talked about increasing the inclusionary requirements from a development standpoint. And so was that only for rental? Was that for sale? Just try to get a better idea of your views and how that ultimately, you know, that mix of requirements feeds into housing.
Well, you know, the housing situation is a very dynamic situation, not only here in Sunnyvale, but throughout the state of California. And we're finding right now that there's a lot of interest in people to move from the rental market into owning. And so, yes, you know, the ownership issue also has to be addressed, but may not be, we may not be able to address it as adequately as we are able to do with some of the rental housing market. You know, the other issue is, you know, even the low-cost housing for sale in the city is well over $1 million. And, you know, pricing, pricing in housing throughout the city of Sunnyvale is astronomical. My little house in downtown is worth $1.8 million, or at least that's what a realtor offered me two weeks ago. You know, and so, you know, you go to the south end, and we're now talking about properties that are $3 million, $4 million, you know, to get into. And we go up north and, you know, there's nothing under a million. Now, if we're getting a developer to build and townhouses are an opportunity to structure some building for lower-cost housing, I think that that is something that we need to push just as much because it's just as much a concern as is the rental housing.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
So thank you for your interest. A final decision will be made by council on May 24th. Of course, you don't need to be there for the vote, and the city clerk will then contact you after that meeting to inform you of that outcome. So thanks for being here.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and rest of the council. Everybody have a great evening, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Bye-bye.
Bye. City Clerk, we're ready for our next candidate.
Yes, candidate Linda Fell is being promoted to panelist.
It's kind of dark.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, there we go. Hi Linda.
Hi.
Good to see you.
Nice to see you all.
Thank you. And I just want to thank you for, you know, your service in housing. Thank you. And, and I just want to thank you for, for, you know, your service in the Housing Human Services Commission. I'll take a moment, of course, to explain our process. Each council member will have an opportunity to speak and ask you a question. Interview is scheduled for 15 minutes, so please keep this in mind when answering questions. If we have time at the, at the end, you can ask us a question. And first up is Councilmember Larson.
Hi, Linda. Good to see you. Thank you for your service on the Housing and Human Services Commission and for reapplying as well. And I wanted to ask a question similar to what I asked Jim Davis, which is about the fees that we collect for housing when new development comes along. And we certainly have a need, we could use as much housing in lieu mitigation fees as we could collect because we have a huge need for affordable housing. At the same time, within our recent study session on the housing element, staff pointed out that our fees, our development fees generally are higher than other cities around here. So what are your thoughts on balancing the need for more housing mitigation fees with not creating additional impediments for developing much needed housing?
I believe that there needs to, as you said, there needs to be a balance. If there's too many fees, then it makes it harder for, can you hear me? It makes it harder for a developer to find the means to develop. So I think it's good that our staff does studies to compare us with the rest of the local community and that we're similar to the other nearby communities because a developer could choose to develop elsewhere or in Sunnyvale. So I think those access studies are very important and they're what? I assume the council would, and, and our Housing and Human Services would base their decisions on studies that staff commissions and how that makes sense in terms of being affordable for a developer to develop something and also meeting our needs to the community to having enough funds for public amenities. But if one is out of balance with the other, then it's not going to be helpful to the whole community as a whole. So I believe you look at the whole picture and you look at the studies that our staff commissions and rely on that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Dean.
Thank you. And hi, Linda. It's great to see you here. As usual, thank you so much for the work that you've done thus far on the commission and just your service to the city. My question is similar to the one that I asked to the last applicant as well. Obviously, as we all know, one of the most important functions of the commission is giving advice on the usage of our CDVG and block grants. And just, you can go, no need to go too into the details generally. What do you think are some of the most important ways and framework that we should use to analyze where that money is going and what we're using it for?
I thought it was really effective for the staff to work with the commission to come up with criteria to award the funds to, and then also to look at the community's needs, such as when we had COVID, then we had a lot of people that, you know, needed assistance with rent. And then we were able to work with Sunnyvale Community Services to, and the other nonprofits to get rental relief. And it was really good to hear the stories directly from Sunnyvale Community Services to say, you know, if we can keep people in their homes, then it's more likely that they won't be homeless. But if by chance they are not able to meet the rental needs and they become homeless, that is even doubly harder to get them back into, back into their normal lives. So it was really good to be able to hear that firsthand stories from community service, from Sunnyvale Community Services. And so, and also, you know, Sunnyvale Community Services is, is a very trusted nonprofit in our community. So having them as a resource to kind of balance what the staff is telling us in terms of where the needs is, and then having community services and other nonprofits like re, recheck can reconfirm that those are the good uses for the funds. Makes me more reassured that the funds are going to areas of most need. So I think the most important is to be able to work with our partners and like Sunnyvale Community Services and staff and have them rank the areas in which there is the most need and where the funds will have the most benefit, such as rental relief, such as the Sunnyvale Community Services being able to expand and then by their expansion being able to serve more people more effectively. I thought another really good way that the staff proceeded was they looked at, they looked at input from the community, the city council, and the Housing and Human Services Commission. And we said that, well, it seems like, you know, these funds aren't being stretched very far. You know, it's only, you know, this many families, could, could it be stretched more? And then I thought it was really good that the staff looked back and thought, well, why don't we make it more efficient by having, instead of having the funds divided between two nonprofit community organizations, to having one consolidating it, and that consolidation would make the funds stretch further. So I thought that our staff was brilliant in the way that they were able to take our feedback, analyze the best approach to go forward with that, present that to the Humans Housing and Human Services Commission, and then get our feedback again and keep moving forward in that direction. So I think we have excellent staff in our Housing and Human Services staff. So it's been a pleasure working with them.
Definitely, and I appreciate that the earnest of your answer and appreciate that you were able to help our community through the pandemic in that respect. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Spitalary.
Hello, Linda. Nice to meet you. Right off the bat, thank you for your service and your commitment to the city. The question I had, and I asked of former Jim Davis also, besides the revenue that we get from the state, Fed, and local areas as far as dealing with the homeless, do you think there's a, we could do, be more aggressive as a city in directing the, the issues and dealing with that?
I think that the state with their, sometimes they have a surplus. So being able to have the bandwidth with staff to be able to look at programs that might, that the city might apply for to help with homeless might be good. But I think we're probably limited on staff that we have within Sunnyvale. So I think it is also good to work with, you know, the nonprofits like Sunnyvale Community Services to, because they have a larger picture and they have a day to day picture of what the best use of the funds are. So being able to hear from them, like if you could allocate it to a refrigeration system, then, then they would tell us, you know, then we could be able to like save more money because we would, the food wouldn't be spoiled and, you know, the effectiveness of just listening to people on the ground, helping the community and providing the funds for them once we understand the need and relying on that. The people on the front lines probably know best how to use the money, especially trusted nonprofits that we've worked with for years and years. So if we don't have the resources to expand our staff to look for more grants and to continually get more grants in terms of homeless issue, I guess it would be to partner with nonprofits that we trust and are credible to be kind of our eyes and ears and whatever resources we have to allocate them accordingly to the best use of what staff recommends of, and the community in which they feed back to us in public comment and also the nonprofits that the city partners with. So with our limited funds, it's a community that I think needs to work together to help with the homeless issue. That's why I believe.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you, Linda, for the, the very thoughtful answers. You know, we're, we're in the process of reupdoing our, redoing our housing element. From a housing standpoint, what do you think are kind of the main, should be the top one or two things that Sunnyvale should focus on as we're looking at housing in the upcoming, in the future, as we're looking both Moffett Park specific plan as well as just the general city zoning?
I think it should be to try to expand the capacity for the housing in Sunnyvale where you can, such as, like I work near Dwayne and I'm used to hearing people say, I need to move out of this area because it's too expensive. My kids will never be able to live. And then I live on Dwayne where there's, there used to be commercial development and that commercial development has been rezoned to be housing. And so you have all these townhouses and they're like three story townhouses. And I walk by there every day and I see families with carriages. I see little kids on the playground. And so it's nice to see a part of Sunnyvale where new families can come and live. So I think that we need to be a community that has a diversity of age and of, where people are in and their lives to be able to have a strong community. And I believe like when we were able to rezone commercial areas to be residential and for it to blossom into all these hundreds of housing units where people can live and start new lives is really exciting. So more of that, I think would be great. And then I don't see like pushback from the community when we, I, the city apparently does, does the outreach to figure out which areas are good for the hundreds of housings that needs to be developed. And then for the resources like parks and infrastructure to be channeled in those areas where there's a lot more housing. I'm an engineer by background, so I just believe that when you look into the future and when you plan and that leads to, you know, good decision making, which, you know, looking at Dwayne, every time I walk through there, it's really well kept up and it's nicely planned, it's safe, it's, and it's, it's much better appearance than when they had a lot of old industrial uses there. So really happy with that. And I hope that that could continue in other parts of the city, all over the city, not just in North Sunnyvale, but all over the city where it makes sense.
Okay. Thank you very much. And lastly, we have Vice Mayor Sisneros.
Yeah, thank you so much. It's good to see you, Linda.
Hi.
Hi, thanks for your, your service to the city and for what you do outside of this as well. You teed up my question so perfectly with just the last thing that you said there, answering the mayor's thoughtful question. You mentioned we need, you know, it can't just all be in North Sunnyvale or in these, these pockets, right? We also have to, we're charged with affirmatively furthering fair housing, which means, you know, essentially it's one way of saying we need to build, even in pockets of affluence or places that are, are less dense. And you mentioned places where it makes sense. Given South of, Sunnyvale, South of Al Camino is, is pretty low density and it can be challenging to figure out where to build there. What are some things that we need to do in order to get more housing all across the city, including places like South Sunnyvale where there hasn't traditionally been a lot of growth?
Well, I think there are strip malls and there's office, you know, older office complexes. I think, I think at the planning commission, maybe last week, they talked about this medical complex, which is going to be redeveloped. And I think that's really into mixed use, I believe. And so I think that's exciting. You take these strip malls and you have it be mixed use. And then you still have on the bottom floor, the commercial, but maybe on the second floor or around there, you have residential. So I think those are good uses to look at kind of older strip malls and make a mixed use, older office complex. I also think that informing the community more about ADUs and informing them about, you know, SB nine and what the city has done in terms of being able to work with SB nine. So when they're remodeling, they can figure out, hmm, that's SB nine makes sense for me. My parents and my kids, you know, maybe I want to live in the same complex with them or I want to have extra income or something like that. So I think being able to inform the residents more about, you know, housing policy that has come from the state and the helpful policies so that they can implement it if they want to. And also being able to look at older strip malls and office complex to see if making them mixed use would still allow them to have their commercial usefulness in terms of generating revenue for the city. On top of that, having like mixed use to have housing in that area too. And that makes, you know, more that, I assume that would also help the businesses too with more traffic. So. So most mixed uses that I've seen in Sunnyvale has done, has been done well. It's been tasteful, even downtown. You see it sprouting up and it all like just makes sense.
Thank you very much. Yeah, looking forward to continuing conversations about that going forward. And I appreciate your thinking around it.
Okay. Thank you, Linda, for going through this process. A final decision will be made by city council on May 24th. And then the city clerk will contact you after that meeting to inform you of that outcome. So thanks for being here tonight.
Okay. Thank you for interviewing us all. Have a nice day.
Have a good evening. Good night. City Clerk, we're ready for our next candidate?
Yes, your next candidate, Catherine Philly, has been promoted to panelist. Catherine, if you can turn on your video and your microphone.
Hello.
Hi, Catherine.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Sunnyvale Mayor Larry Klein.
Nice to meet you.
Good to meet you. And I want to thank you for applying to be on our boards and commissions. Let me take a moment to explain our process this evening. Each council member will have an opportunity to ask you a question. And then the interview scheduled, scheduled to last about 15 minutes. So please keep that in mind as you're answering the questions. First up is Councilmember Dean.
Thank you, Mayor, and hi, Catherine. It's a pleasure to meet you. And thank you so much for applying to serve the city in this capacity. You know, reading through your application, I was so impressed by your deep background in art and just how credentialed you are. And so even though you ranked as your second choice, I did want to ask you a question more related to art, just as I think it'd be interesting. I'd love to hear your thoughts on it. When you look back over different, you know, historic art movements, what's your personal favorite art movement and what qualities of it do you think the city of Sunnyvale could learn from?
That's an excellent question. I would say quite easily that my favorite art movement was the Bauhaus movement. And that's actually one of the reasons why I went to the School of the Art Institute of Chicago because they were the, the closest that I could get to the Bauhaus. And I, I liked the advancement that they were making culturally, socially, and with art across the board, changing the materials that were used for industrial purposes and making those functional. So, yeah.
Thank you. I know I enjoyed hearing your passion about it and thank you again for applying. Thank you. No, I enjoyed hearing your passion about it and thank you again for applying.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Spittleary.
Hi Catherine, nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you.
Thank you for applying. I really don't have much to ask you. I see that you picked auction rec and then as your, your first choice over the Arts Commission, why did you do that?
I enjoy both of them and I would happily serve on either one of them. I do have a passion for the outdoors and I spend a lot of time in the outdoors, going for walks. I had a Weimaraner who died recently, so up until then, he and I would go for six mile, two, three mile hikes a day around the city, just walking around different areas of the city and adventuring. That's sort of how I've gotten to know, know Sunnyvale during the time of COVID, because you can't really go to any place and meet people and do things. So he and I would just go, go around. And I have learned to appreciate the town of Sunnyvale, the culture that is here. I come from, I was born and raised in San Francisco, but spent the last 20 years in Nevada and Marin County, which is a very different culture than the South Bay. And so I'm appreciating the, the South Bay. And I spent this weekend actually going around to every park in Sunnyvale and spent my mother's day going from one park to the other and taking notes and writing things down about all the different parks. I visited the Magical Bridge Playground and actually met Ava and her dad there. They just happened to be there and I was walking up to the park and I was saying to my son, oh, this is the one. And, and then they introduced themselves to me. So, so I like, I do like going out to the parks. I like making sure that the parks would be open and accessible for people. I've worked in paratransit, transportation for the last four years. So understanding mobility issues that people can have and making sure that there's equity and accessibility for people is something that I notice now. But you know, I also noticed as I was driving around the beautiful public art that was smattered, scattered around the, the city is, you know, the corporations have to include their public art in their building projects. And so it's fun for me to go around and to see the public art as well.
While you were taking your notes at each one of these parks, I'm sure there was some good positive things that you saw and might continue. What were some of the things that you thought we can improve on?
And what are some of the things?
That you thought we might be able to improve on?
So some of the parks where especially where there are water features that are now empty. I, I wonder if there's some sort of recreation that could be happening there. There is, I spoke to some young people who were doing parkour and it was in Las Palmas Park. And so they were doing parkour around where the, the concrete slide is. And I mean, it's fascinating to watch. If I were younger, when, you know, parkour was around, I would certainly be doing parkour. That looks really fun. But I wonder if we could change maybe some of the things that are, that are there that used to be water features and make them using, available for use for the kids of today. Maybe, I know that we already have skate parks, but maybe a parkour course would be something that would be relatively inexpensive and used by the, by the children, teenage. Give them something to do.
Yeah, there you go. Well, thank you very much and thank you again for applying and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. And I just want to say, I like that, you know, you're, you're basically an enthusiast both in the parks and in the arts equally here. Just from your comments, I appreciate your responsiveness as well as, you know, your interest from a, in, in that you're already taking that, that initiative to visit the different parks in the area. Do you have a favorite park? And I, you know, I, I appreciate the, the, I myself do a two to five mile run on a daily basis with my dog and visit a lot of the different parks and artwork within the city. Do you have a favorite park and what makes it your favorite?
Well, I live very close to Sarah Park and I have to say that is a very well loved park. It is often filled with music and family and activities all weekend long. And that's, that's really neat. I think that that's how a park should be used. But going around to the, these other parks, I would say that I was really impressed with Las Palmas. And I would also say Fair Oaks was, I mean, my goodness, what a complex that is. Both of my kids played rugby growing up. And I know that there's a lot of cricket that's played there, but I wonder if there's rugby that happens there too. Those are beautiful fields, so.
Yeah, and, and the city has a, a 20 year, $200 million plan to renovate all of our parks. And Fair Oaks has been one of the first ones that have been renovated too, and you see the results. So, so happy to hear that.
Very well done.
Thank you. Next up is Vice Mayor Sisneros.
Yeah, hi, thank you so much. And Catherine, it's so good to meet you and thank you so much for putting in this application. I enjoyed reading it and hearing your answers to the previous questions. Yeah, my question would be, where is one part of the city, either it be a kind of structure or a specific area of the city where you would prioritize putting more art and why?
I, I don't, I don't know. I would need to learn, learn more. And that's part of the desire to join the commission and be part of the, the government and see what's happening is I don't have the understanding of the, the background. I'm still getting to learn the area of Sunnyvale. So it was driving through the area around Lakewood Park. And between, I, I sort of did a route starting from where we live and go up and around to all the parks. But I would say that from Encino and Orchard Garden Park, Lakewood Park and Seven Seas Park, I would have to add Seven Seas Park to my favorite parks, by the way. That I did notice the, the art that was outside of the buildings and, and slowed down to look at it and enjoy it. But I don't know that I know specifically what area at this time would need to be looked at. But I'm more than happy to do research and, and talk with people and, and do the legwork to get the answers.
Absolutely, thank you. And I, I just asked because you had mentioned some really good examples of where we've introduced art and, you know, maybe unexpected ways like having our, our business community participate and create, having art as part of their design and sods. And, and then also you mentioned the utility boxes, which was a really cool thing that we did recently. So yeah, really value your perspective on these things. And as you get around the city, I'm sure you'll have lots of ideas, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Councilmember Larson.
Hi Catherine, nice to meet you and thank you for applying. Wanted to start with just a short kind of logistical question. I noticed in your application, you mentioned that you're, you still work for a nonprofit in San Rafael, which is probably a little bit of a commute from Sunnyvale. So I just wanted to make sure that if and when we return to in-person meetings, that you would be able to attend an evening meeting once a month, an in-person meeting once a month.
I, I have no intention to, the business is back in person in San Rafael and I just attend remotely. I've actually given them my notice twice and they keep asking me to stay on and continue on. And I enjoy the team and I do enjoy the work, so I have continued. And because it's part-time work, I have time and flexibility to do other things as well.
Wonderful, good. And then the real question I wanted to get to was, as you've been around the city and you've seen public art that we have in various places, what's one piece that really stands out for you and why? Or three pieces?
I, I, I do apologize because I don't think that I went around with looking at the public art and trying to choose which, which pieces were my, my favorites. I was appreciating them and I, I wasn't, wasn't noting them. I was more just enjoying them as I, as I went by and not noting them. So I couldn't, I couldn't answer them today, but tomorrow I could.
Well, that's an honest answer, so thank you.
Thank you, and, and thank you Catherine for your interest in going through the application process. A final decision will be made by Sunnyvale Council on May 24th. You don't need to be present to, to be at that meeting to be appointed. City Clerk will contact you after that meeting to inform you of that final outcome. So thanks for being here tonight.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate it.
Thank you and have a good evening.
You too.
At this time, let's go ahead and take about a nine-minute recess and we'll reconvene at 7:10 PM. See you. See you.
we do receive a presentation about different works that are going to be happening at the various parks. So I know that, for instance, Sarah Park in the next several years is going to be renovated. It seems like Las Palmas is also due. It seems like most of the parks. Even the the Sunnyvale Community Center is is going to be renovated as well, not too long from now. So it seems as though there will be a lot of renovations coming in the future. I think one thing that I really appreciate about magical bridges, and it would be nice to have at other parks as well as having that all inclusive playground. So that people have all sorts of different abilities and backgrounds, they're able to find some part of the park where they can they can enjoy, whether it's a tactile piece, whether it's a you know, more of a visual piece, whatever it may be, that it is more inclusive of all of all people, of all abilities. That that's definitely something that I'm that I'm hoping will come. Not just that, but it would be great to have. You know, this is just again, something to think about is more family bathrooms. That I that I definitely think could be very useful, not just for those who are nursing, but also family bathrooms in the sense of all inclusive genders. I think that's something that it'd be great to see at the parks as we go forward. And we have a very diverse set of populations that come and visit the park. So that'd be great in the future to have those bathrooms.
Mr. Mayor, we've reached seven ten, the stated end of the recess.
Okay, let's go ahead and reconvene. And we are ready for our next candidate.
Your next candidate, Donna Mason, is joining as a panelist.
Hi.
Hi, Donna. How are you doing?
Good. It's nice to see everyone. I feel like I went through this not too long ago.
Yes, it does seem that way. Good seeing you again via Zoom. And thanks, of course, for reapplying to the Parks and Rec Commission.
Of course, it's been an honor to be on the commission thus far. So thank you for having me.
That's fantastic. Let me explain the process. I know you didn't go through it that long ago, but each council member will have an opportunity to speak and ask you a question. The interview is scheduled for fifteen minutes. So, you know, please keep that in mind as you're answering our questions. First up is Councilmember Spitalary.
Oh, good evening.
Good evening.
So you've been joining yourself on the one year you've been on the Parks and Recreation Commission?
Yes, sir. Almost a year. Yes, it's gone by way too quickly.
I'm going to assume, or maybe I shouldn't assume, that you've been around to all the different parks and see what's going on in them and everything.
Actually, yeah, most recently I was over at the grand opening of the Fair Oaks Park. So we were we were there at Magical Bridges. We absolutely loved it. And when I say we, my husband and my my children as well, we went there on opening day.
So with some of the experiences of use on the parks in Recreation Commission, and plus maybe visiting some of the parks. Is there anything you think that we may be able to do to enhance the parks or improve the parks, the existing parks? Any thoughts along those lines?
That's a great question. It's an interesting question in the sense that every every month when we have our monthly meetings, we do receive a presentation about different works that are going to be happening at the various parks. So I know that, for instance, Sarah Park in the next several years is going to be renovated. It seems like Las Palmas is also due. It seems like most of the parks, even the the Sunnyvale Community Center is is going to be renovated as well, not too long from now. So it seems as though there will be a lot of renovations coming in the future. I think one thing that I really appreciate about magical bridges, and it would be nice to have at other parks as well as having that all inclusive playground. So that people have all sorts of different abilities and backgrounds, they're able to find some part of the park where they can they can enjoy, whether it's a tactile piece, whether it's a you know, more of a visual piece, whatever it may be, that it is more inclusive of all of all people, of all abilities. That that's definitely something that I'm that I'm hoping will come. Not just that, but it would be great to have. You know, this is just, again, something to think about is more family bathrooms that I that I definitely think could be very useful, not just for those who are nursing, but also family bathrooms in the sense of all inclusive genders. I think that's something that it'd be great to see at the parks as we go forward. And we have a very diverse set of populations that come and visit the park. So that'd be great in the future to have those bathrooms.
Appreciate you. I really like you. Thank you.
And by the way, it's my understanding you you are now back with the city. So welcome back.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
I don't know, but you're welcome with condolences. But anyway, thank you.
And and Donna, thank you for the previous answers. Yeah, definitely. That was one of the things that I was happy to see as part of Fair Oaks Park is that family bathrooms that have been added. And then, of course, you know, as we renovate all the parks, as you're listing, it is that long term vision to continue renovating our parks. As far as your favorite park and and what you would like to see added, or or what issues do you see it? Your what what park do you most often use? And what do you what do you think is the pluses and minuses of that park?
That's a great question, especially given the fact that I have little kids right now. So we spend a good amount of time at the park. It's one of the ways I try to keep my sanity. But one thing, one of my favorite things about Sarah Park is, especially when my my kids were a little bit younger, was it and this also holds true for Ortega Park. Both of them have the water piece. So in the summer, for those of us that don't have pools, it's a great way to help. And we don't have air conditioning where we live. It's a great way to be able to build community. My kids are able to run around with other kids. They're all giggling, laughing together in the water. That that is great. Another thing that I I noticed at at Ortega Park more and also at Sarah Park is, and forgive me, regrettably, I'm not so good with the terms, but the rubber ground, you find that at at the the new Fair Oaks Park as well as that rubber ground. I taught my husband this all the time. I love it. I feel so much safer if my kids fall, whatever's going on, that it's it's and also from, you know, as as a mother that has to do laundry all the time, it's so much cleaner than having sand everywhere and coming home with a ton of sand or bark in the clothes or whatever it may be, that rubber is fantastic. And again, forgive me, I don't know if that's really the term of what it is. My husband's pointed out to me several times. Regrettably, I can't remember exactly what it is. But that type of flooring, my kids are able to bounce back very quickly. So so that is great. One thing, one thing that I do really appreciate about Sarah Park, and as someone that's lived in Sunnyvale pretty much my entire life, and, you know, as a kid, I used to go to Sarah Park, is the fact that the bathroom has been renovated. That bathroom was not, I don't know, I didn't feel the safest or the cleanest in there, you know, several years ago, or even when I took my kids there a few years ago, and the fact that they were able to build a very nice bathroom and then just just place it in is is amazing. And so I feel a lot more comfortable being able to take my children there. One thing that would be great, just that would be great with the parks, that I would love to see more of also. And I don't know how feasible this is, is more shade area. And that's something I even pointed out at Fair Oaks. It'd be great if there was, you know, as the kids are playing on the swings or on the on the roundabouts, whatever, it may be somehow it was more shaded when it becomes, you know, very, very hot in the summer.
Okay.
I hope that answered your question.
No, definitely. And thanks for thanks for throwing out those many ideas. And and I think that's one of the best things about being, you know, being part of the Parks and Rec Commission, as well as doing all the community outreach, is getting those that feedback from a council standpoint, as well as city staff to to design better parks at the end of the day, at the at the end of the day. So thank you for that. Next up is Vice Mayor Cisneros.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And hi, it's good to see you again.
Likewise.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much for all of your service on the commission so far. And and I'm curious, now that you've had a chance to be there for a year. What is the most or one of the most interesting items you've heard while you've been on the commission? And why was, why does it stand out to you, something you really liked talking about?
That's that's a great question. And by the way, congratulations to you being Vice 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 Mayor. That's a great question. I really, and this is kind of a little bit more broad, but I really appreciate when residents of Sunnyvale come in with their own pitch, when there's something that they wish could be improved about the parks and, you know, they'll take the time, they'll put a lot of time and thought into a PowerPoint, they'll present it to us about, you know, why we should do X, Y, or Z. And it's very interesting to see how passionate they are about how our parks can be used. An example of that would be a couple of weeks ago, or several weeks ago, rather, we had a gentleman come and talk about disc golf. And as someone that's played ultimate frisbee for a number of years, you know, it would be great to have disc golf course get disc golf goals all around our various parks. It's from a cost standpoint, it's not a ton of money to put them in. It's hours and hours of fun. In a lot of ways, it can be inclusive in terms of children and adults playing. So really, what I appreciate are different citizens coming in with ideas that they've, you know, that they have in the back of their head. And and they they want our opinion. They want their voices to be heard. And the fact that we give them a good amount of time, and not just that we give them time as commissioners, but we also ask them questions. We are we are very much engaged in why they want, you know, said development. And we're curious, what is the procedure? How can we make it possible? I remember there's another gentleman who talked about how there was a trail, the Stevens Creek Trail, right behind his house, and it was fenced off. And he he discussed how there's so much good walking path in that area. And he was wondering, why is it fenced off? How can we make it more accessible for families to be able to to put their kids in the stroller, take their dogs out, whatever it may be, and have this area for them to use, especially given that it's so close to a number of different families' backyards? And it was interesting to hear, you know, well, wait a second, the Water Commission is involved. It sometimes you may have such a simple idea, or even with disc golf, think like, okay, this would be so easy to implement. But then, for lack of a better phrase, the voice of reason comes in and says, well, actually, it's not so simple. This, you know, this is going to take A, B, and C to be able to put in these it's a standalone disc golf goals, or, you know, do we have to get the Water Commission involved? We have to do this. We even had a panelist from the city of Cupertino come in and explain when this was an issue in her city, you know, how much of a process it was to be able to open up a path. So to me, it's really interesting as a a resident of Sunnyvale almost my entire life to hear like, okay, this is what happens on the backend. It's not so simple as we just want this improvement. Or, you know, a big issue that's come up a lot for some of the members on our on our commission is batting cages and having more access to batting cages and what that looks like and who's using the batting cages. And are they actual residents or of Sunnyvale as opposed to others that come in to use it? And it's it's really interesting how data driven this whole process is as well. And I mean, that makes sense, living in Silicon Valley, but what I've really noticed is we want to make sure that our parks serve as many people as possible, which I'm passionate about.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much for that answer. And I'm so glad that you are enjoying being in city government, because that's what it is. You'll have a good idea. And then it's like, wait, hold on. We have so many things to discuss first.
Yes.
It's I and that can and for some people, that's really frustrating and like not a great part, but I'm I'm really glad that you're, you know, maybe like me love diving into that. And thank you for being very responsive to our residents. Service.
Thank you for saying that.
Thank you. And next up is Councilmember Larson.
Hi, good to see you again. Thank you for reapplying. The vice mayor asked exactly my question, and I really appreciated your answer. So thank you for asking the question and thank you for answering it. So I I was very intrigued by, you were mentioning the public coming in and volunteering ideas or also sharing in other discussions. And what are your thoughts on what makes the meeting more accessible to the public? What helps with engagement? What what do you think, or what do you find helps draw in the public more?
That that's a great question. And I recall, somehow we touched upon this in my initial interview roughly about a year ago. And I I think there needs to be more outreach in terms of when meetings are being held, how they're being held. I I realize that, you know, we're sort of somewhat in a pandemic in the sense that right now, our meetings are still taking place on online. We are given these questionnaires roughly every month to figure out whether or not it's going to remain that way. But to answer your broader question, and it is, I think there are a lot of groups, like there needs to be more outreach at religious organizations, playgrounds, you know, where where different populations hang out to at libraries, there needs to be more notice about these meetings so that people that may not necessarily be as political or or as civically engaged can say, hey, wait a second, actually, I do have a good idea. Wait a second, there has been something on my mind that I wish I could get out. This would be a perfect way to get it out. You want you want to be able to publicize what our city government does, including the Parks and Rec Commission, at places where people gather. Because not everyone is always on online, or not everyone knows what's going on. You know, is is not as technologically savvy. So so targeting places, like I said, a library, different shopping centers, putting up poster boards or or getting the word out to different religious groups or or mom groups, whatever it may be, that, wait a second, you're living in Sunnyvale, you've either lived here for a while, or you or you maybe want to make this your forever place, your forever home. Please get involved, have your voice be heard. So it really is just trying to get the the message out through a number of different mediums, not just the computer.
Great. Thank you. Those are really good ideas.
Thank you. And lastly, we have Councilmember Dean.
Hi, Donna. Thank you so much for reapplying and thank you for your service to the city thus far. I one thing I wanted to ask you is, as you applied into the commission and over the last year that you've been on it, what's one thing that you didn't really expect going into it that you've learned over the course of your service thus far?
That's that's a that's a great question. Just that's a great question. I mean, one one thing for sure is how much planning goes into our different parks and how how long term that planning is. You know, as I mentioned, like, for instance, Sarah Park, it has a theme of 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 Tom, so of that Tom Sawyer era. And that's definitely going to be revitalized, but that doesn't happen for a number of years in the future. And so one thing I didn't really expect is just how long term the planning is when it comes comes to the parks. That's something that's definitely new to me. Just from like a, just from a personal perspective, it's really interesting to hear how my colleagues on the commission, what they're passionate about, and really what piques their interest, right? So I I've been in meetings where we're talking about batting cages and who's using the batting cages literally for an hour. Right? And really, and and wanting more data and figuring, okay, how can we make this more accessible to baseball teams or whatever it may be? And just the level of passion about certain topics that may not necessarily be at the forefront of my mind. It it's nice to get that diverse perspective. And, you know, I'm kind of like, wait a second, okay, that does, I I could see it. So it's kind of like those little aha moments for me, you know, me being a a mother, or a recent, in some ways, a recent mother, my perspective or the things that I'm really interested in, maybe different than that of my colleagues. So having that diverse discourse, that diverse set of interests to me, I guess it's it's something that I've been really pleasantly surprised about, just because I'm able to learn and yeah, learn more. And then and also, like I said, I really appreciate the level of detail and planning that goes into these different parks, not just that, but where the funding comes from. That's also very interesting to me, just in terms of how many different hands are in this 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 pool of money and how these parks are actually come to fruition, right? Because they're not cheap endeavors by any stretch of the imagination. And as someone that has used these parks ever since I was a little kid, definitely, they need to be, a lot, a lot of them do need to be revitalized and revamped. And it's interesting to hear and see how much that really takes and the time that's involved. And and not just that, but it's also, I guess I can go on and on, just how how building has changed since since I was a kid. At this point, like for Sarah Park, the renovations that they're doing, they're not built on site. They literally built this bathroom offsite, and then they plop it in onto the onto the park. So it's just interesting from like a construction standpoint, or from an efficiency standpoint, hearing, okay, that this is really how we renovate parks. So I think that was a bit of a long winded answer, but nonetheless.
I appreciate it nonetheless. But no, thank you so much for your answer. And it's clear the passion that's shining through. And so it's good to see. And then also, I think you're completely right that we pride ourselves on Sunnyvale and thinking long term. And it's good to see that reverberating. So thank you.
Thank you, all of you.
Thank you. And thank you for applying tonight. A final decision will be made by council on May twenty fourth, and you don't need to be there during the vote. And then the city clerk will contact you after that meeting to inform you of the final outcome. So thanks for being here and have a good evening.
Perfect. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it. Have a great night.
Thank you. City clerk, we're ready for our next candidate.
Yes, your next candidate, Bryce Spiegel, is being promoted to panelist.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Perfect.
Hi, Bryce. Good to see you again. I'm Sunnyvale Mayor Larry Klein. Thanks for joining us tonight and and for applying for BPAC. I'll take a moment to explain our process. Each council member will have an opportunity to ask you a question. The interview is scheduled for about fifteen minutes, so please keep that in mind when answering. And I'm up first, so I just want to thank you for your application. And in going through it, I was happy to see that you're pedestrian focused, as opposed to not just, it's like, quite often, I'll say BPAC is very bicycle focused. From a pedestrian within the city of Sunnyvale, what what facilities, what issues do you see that need to be worked on?
So a lot of the city seems to be designed from the perspective of cars. And while, I mean, that applies to bikes as well, but I'm seeing a lot of discussion in the commission, like every time it like discussion item comes up, the questions are always oriented towards bicycle infrastructure. And there's a lot of room for improvement for pedestrian infrastructure. And obviously, the the like downtown Sunnyvale plan and the El Camino rail specific plan and the the other plans the city is proposing have stuff in them for pedestrian improvements. But so like, like raised crosswalks or ball belts, intersections or continuous sidewalks or just chicanes on roads. Like, there's a lot of improvements that could be done for these sidewalks, or not for these pedestrians. But they're not just being, they're not just not being discussed to the fullest extent that I I like in the commission. And I'd just like to add some thoughts and and make sure the council hears these plans, every item or whatever.
I I and I appreciate that. And and thanks for also, you know, being part of the process up to this point, as far as you know, Parks and Rec and some of the community outreach. So thank you for that. Next up is Vice Mayor Cisneros.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Mayor. And good to see you, Bryce. Thank you so much for submitting your application. It was detailed. And it was obvious that you have spent a good amount of time observing our council meetings, participating in them and in the commission meetings both. And that that's a good dual perspective to have, because that, you know, who you're going to be taught, who you're going to be advising through what body. And a common theme that I noticed in your
Thank you. And lastly, we have Councilmember Dean.
Uh, hi, Donna. Thank you so much for reapplying and thank you for your service to the city thus far. Uh, I one thing I wanted to ask you is, as you applied into the commission and over the last year that you've been on it, uh, what's one thing that you didn't really expect going into it that you've learned over the course of your service thus far?
That's that's a that's a great question. Um, just that's a great question. I mean, one one thing for sure is how much planning goes into our different parks and how how long term that planning is, you know, as I mentioned, like, for instance, Sarah Park, it has a theme of 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 Tom, so of that Tom Sawyer era. And that's definitely going to be revitalized, but that doesn't happen for a number of years in the future. And so one thing I didn't really expect is just how long term the planning is when it comes comes to the parks. That's something that's definitely new to me. Um, just from like a just from a personal perspective, it's really interesting to hear how my colleagues on the commission, what they're passionate about and really what piques their interest, right? So I I've been in meetings where we're talking about batting cages and who's using the batting cages literally for an hour. Right? And really, and and wanting more data and figuring, okay, how can we make this more accessible to baseball teams or whatever it may be and just the level of passion about certain topics that may not necessarily be at the forefront of my mind. It it's nice to get that diverse perspective. And, you know, I'm kind of like, wait a second, okay, that does, I I could see it. So it's kind of like those little aha moments for me, you know, uh, me being a a mother or recent in some ways, a recent mother, my perspective or the things that I'm really interested in, maybe different than that of my colleagues. So having that diverse discourse, that diverse set of interests to me, it I guess it's it's something that I've been really pleasantly surprised about, just because I'm able to learn and um, yeah, learn more. And then and also, like I said, I really appreciate the level of detail and planning that goes into these different parks, not just that, but where the funding comes from. That's also very interesting to me, um, just in terms of how many different hands are in this 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 pool of money and how these parks are actually come to fruition, right? Because they're not cheap endeavors by any stretch of the imagination. And as someone that has used these parks ever since I was a little kid, um, definitely, they need to be, a lot, a lot of them do need to be revitalized and revamped, and it's interesting to hear and see how much that really takes and the time that's involved. And and not just that, but it's also, I guess I can go on and on, um, just how how building has changed since um since I was a kid. At this point, like for Sarah Park, the renovations that they're doing, they're not built on site. They literally built this um bathroom offsite and then they plop it in onto the onto the park. So it's just interesting from like a construction standpoint or from an efficiency standpoint, hearing, okay, that this is really how we renovate parks. So I think that was a bit of a long winded answer, but nonetheless.
I appreciate it nonetheless. But no, thank you so much for your answer. And it's clear the passion that's shining through. And so uh, it's good to see. And then also, I think you're completely right that we pride ourselves on Sunnydale and thinking long term, and it's good to see that reverberating. So thank you.
Thank you, all of you.
Thank you, and thank you for applying tonight. Uh, a final decision will be made by council on May twenty fourth, and you don't need to be there during the vote. And then the city clerk will contact you after that meeting to inform you the final outcome. So thanks for being here and have a good evening.
Perfect. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it. Have a great night.
Thank you. City Clerk, we're ready for our next candidate.
Yes, your next candidate Bryce Spiegel is being promoted to panelist.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Perfect.
Hi Bryce, uh, good to see you again. I'm Sunnyvale Mayor Larry Klein. Thanks for joining us tonight and and for applying for BPAC. Uh, I'll take a moment to explain our process. Each council member will have an opportunity to ask you a question. The interview is scheduled for about fifteen minutes, so please keep that in mind when answering. Uh, and I'm up first, so uh, I just want to thank you uh for your application. And in going through it, um, I was happy to see that you're pedestrian focused as opposed to not just, it's like, quite often I'll say BPAC is very bicycle focused. From a pedestrian uh within the city of Sunnyvale, what what facilities, what issues do you see that need to be worked on?
So uh, a lot of the city seems to be designed from the perspective of cars. Uh, and while, I mean, that applies to bikes as well, but I'm I'm seeing a lot of discussion in the commission, like every time it like discussion item comes up, the questions are always oriented towards bicycle infrastructure. And there's a lot of room for improvement for pedestrian infrastructure. Uh, and obviously, the uh, the like downtown Sunnyvale plan and the El Camino rail specific plan and the the other plans the city is proposing uh, have stuff in them for pedestrian um improvements. But it's so like, like raised crosswalks or ball belts on intersections or uh continuous sidewalks or just chicanes on roads. Like, there's a lot of improvements that could be done for these sidewalks, or not side of these pedestrians, uh, but they're not just being, they're not just not being discussed to the fullest extent that I I like in the commission. And I'd just like to add some thoughts and and make sure the council hears these plans, every item or whatever.
I I and I appreciate that. And and thanks for also, you know, being part of the process up to this point as far as you know, parks and rec and some of the community outreach. So thank you for that. Uh, next up is Vice Mayor Cisneros.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Mayor. And good to see you, Bryce. Uh, thank you so much for submitting your application. Um, it was detailed. And it was obvious that you have spent a good amount of time uh observing our council meetings, participating them and in the commission meetings both. And that that's a good dual perspective to have because that, you know, who you're going to be taught, who you're going to be advising through what body. And a common theme that I noticed in your application was talking about the speed at which we make the necessary improvements that are either proposed now or that you would like to propose. So um, you know, I assume you're familiar with some of our constraints around around speed, but how do you think that you can help us as a commissioner move things um in a more rapid forward direction?
Yeah, uh, that's that's a tough question because the commission on its own is an advisory commission. It doesn't have the authority to actually do things. Uh, and its role is to help the council make informed decisions on what should be done in the uh, the community. Um, but so I I I think a lot of the uh, the problem with the speed that which things are done is that the uh, so we have all these these grandiose plans, like the El Camino rail plan and the downtown plan and the Moffett Field Plan, it's Moffett Park Plan. Um, but with with those on the table, it seems like the city council and the the bicycle commission, or bicycle, that be be back uh seem to be just focused on these items. And based on the fact that like, oh, we have this upcoming plan coming out. Uh, we need to wait till there's a redevelopment in the area. We need to like uh, time is not really focused on uh just small improvements. I mean, they happen here and there, but I I think that the 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 big plans kind of restrict the council to an extent in hearing ideas from the the commission and the public or um about smaller improvements. And as a commissioner, I'd like to kind of present these smaller improvements to the the council and have study issues uh performed that just deal with small and minor improvements throughout the city that can be done with a faster uh rate than so like faster rate than waiting for a development to happen. Like I I have lots, there's lots of good things in the downtown Sunnyvale plan, but they're just kind of on hold until the development on the nearby parcels of land is finished, because part of that's due to the funding for these improvements. But like, because the construction might happen in the near in the coming years, we don't want to like rebuild the road because the construction is going to break it or tear it down. And like, because construction has a huge impact on the road, like heavy vehicles and stuff tear it, destroy it. But like, I I think that the the idea in the air that development is coming kind of constraints thoughts and thinking about smaller improvements without. I know, hopefully, hopefully, my point isn't too all over the place. I think I hope you understand what I'm trying to say.
No, I I think, no, I understand. And I think what your idea is, like, we find ways to to refocus council, our call to our attention, opportunities that exist outside of the of of the planned areas that that we're working on, maybe in parts of the city that aren't getting all of that attention right now, but make
Exactly.
lost. Okay. All right. That that's really helpful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Larson.
Hi Bryce, nice to meet you. Uh, thank you for applying, and I want to echo the mayor's appreciation of your interest in uh pedestrian uh improvements and safety. That's often sometime, something that I bring up in when we interview applicants for the BPAC, reminding them that it's the bicycle and pedestrian advisory commission. And you already had it right there in your application, so I don't need to to uh say anything more about that. But I did want to drill down into uh one detail that intrigued me. Um, you were mentioning some potential improvements we might consider. And you had talked about returning public but seemingly de facto private on-street parking to the city. And I certainly understand that, you know, people assume that it's their own private parking when it's not, but could you elaborate a little bit more on what you mean by returning that parking to the city and how you think uh we might go about doing that?
Well, a recent example of this was on Sunnyvale Avenue, where there is a whole process to remove a couple like dozens of parking spots in order to add a new bike lane on Sunnyvale Avenue north of Caltrain Station. And the a huge problem with, a huge problem that arose with that situation is a lot of the residents just thought the parking like belonged to their house. You buy the house, you know, there's a parking spot in front of it. And so you kind of just get on this false sense of security. It's like, that's my spot. It doesn't belong to the city. It's mine. Um, and I I I think we could have a bit better awareness and a bit more forward process for like, just continuing that endeavor. It's like, no, this is the city's pro- um city's property. It should be useful by every citizen, not just the people that own the plot of land in front of the the uh, the road.
And and do you have any thoughts on how we could push that message out or effective ways to deliver that message?
Uh, I I thought the the messaging that the city was uh using for like Sunnyvale Avenue was by and large effective. And so I don't really have a good uh solution off the top of my head of like how it could be improved beyond just like, oh, just do it more. But
Okay.
Um, I I I do think that just it's the more it happens, the more that citizens just become aware of the idea. It's like, oh, that's right. It's not actually my property. So like, I I think it's just baby steps. You just got to do it more and more, and then people just start understanding.
Yeah, got it. Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Dean.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, hi Bryce, it's great to see you. Thank you so much for applying. Uh, and I really enjoyed the discussion that you spurred thus far. It's been really interesting and engaging. Uh, one of the things I noticed on your application uh was that you answered one of the questions saying how you see one of the central roles that the commission plays, that you would play on the commission as uh being a proponent for study issues. Uh, I think you even mentioned uh pedestrian focused study issues. And so I'm curious, you can answer this one of two ways, either what is a study issue you would like to see proposed? Or what is a study issue that has already been proposed that to you really sticks out as something very important?
Yeah. Um, so having read a lot of the study issues that the city has done in the past year or so, there haven't been very many that are focused entirely on pedestrians. There's been a bit with like uh safe routes to school. And there was a study with like a pedestrian scramble for one of the outside, one of the schools in the southern part of the city. But I I would like to see the city have study issues, as as my application said, and you've reiterated here, study issues that are focused purely or majority on pedestrians. Like, I'd like to see the study or the 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 council have a study issue on like the effectiveness of raised crosswalks or continuous sidewalks uh in the urban areas, like it, I mean, it doesn't even have to be urban areas, like neighborhoods that are like even single family housing neighborhoods benefit from continuous sidewalks. Um, and like bulbouts on the the intersections, uh, like study issues that concern these topics, I think are hugely important. And I just, I I'd want the city to investigate some of those things.
Definitely. I appreciate your thoughtfulness and thank you again for applying.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And next up is Councilmember Spitalary.
Evening Bryce, thank you for applying. Um, I have two questions and one hypothetical. The other one is, you keep mentioning that that um look for the the smaller things that you think the city council can do without going through a study issue or policy change. What what are some of the things you're thinking about?
Uh, so I um, I I've mentioned a couple of times in this uh, this interview session that I I think just the path towards improving pedestrian infrastructure is, well, the the path towards improving pedestrian infrastructure, infrastructure begins with sidewalks and crosswalks. Um, and a lot of these these small items, I I don't think require grandiose uh like big plans for the whole city. Like, I I've, I mean, having a guideline for the city is important, but just I I I don't think we need to set in stones, like, okay, this is the intersection, this is the intersection, this is the intersection, this is the intersection. I'd like the the guideline to come out. It's like, we want to do this to intersect. We want these raised crosswalks. We want these bulbouts. We want these, we want to reduce the curb radius here. We want to reduce or remove the uh the slip lane during the right turn stuff. Uh, and then work from there. It's like, okay, with that in mind, we've identified some intersections, but we don't need to identify all of them. Just start with some, just start with a few things and then expand the plan from there, if that makes sense.
Um, yeah, it's interesting. George, I kind of agree with you on that. Sometimes there's a lot of prevailing issues surrounding anyone's thinking when it comes to the city and what actually takes place. You know, interesting thing, and I and I get this and I and and I like to hear your point. What if you have a citizen turns up to you and says, yeah, that park and place is mine. The reason is mine. The reason is mine because I pay taxes. My taxes build the roads, not the city. My taxes from federal grants, state grants are from taxes. So I have a right to park here. I'm paying for it.
Right. And I would count, that's right. I I would, I would counter that my taxes also paid for that road, like uh, just just because you have a house in front of it, doesn't mean that there's other users, there's not other users of that public space. Um, like, eh, there's like, it it's it's public space, not private space paid for by the public. Um, it's just because your taxes go to that uh, doesn't mean they only go to that. They also go to funding the the roads and the infrastructure throughout the whole city or the whole state with state taxes. They also go towards funding the park that's down the street, but like the people that live in front of the park are not the only people that are able to use the park. You could use it too. Uh, and that that's how I, that's kind of how I'd respond to that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for pointing. We appreciate it.
Mm hmm. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Bryce, uh, thank you for going through the process tonight. A final decision we've made by city council on May twenty fourth. And you don't need to be at that meeting when we're doing that final vote, but the city clerk will then contact you after that meeting to inform you of the final outcome.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. City Clerk, we're ready with our next candidate.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. I'm having trouble connecting with the next candidate. And we do have an individual who joined with a name that's not on your interviewee interviewee list. So let me just check in to see if perhaps the individual is there. Uh, we have someone who joined by the name Kylie Burgess. Are you by any chance Alex Bond, the next applicant?
I am not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then we do have, there we go. All right, your next applicant has joined or promoted into panelist.
Hi, Alex.
Good evening.
Uh, can you turn on your video just so we get to see your face?
There we go.
Oh, there we go. Hey, good to see you again.
Likewise.
Thank you for reapplying for BPAC.
Uh, thank you for considering me.
Let me take a moment to explain this process, which I'm sure you know, but each council member has an opportunity to ask you a question. The interview is scheduled for about fifteen minutes, so please keep that in mind as you're answering our questions. And first up is Vice Mayor Cisneros.
Yeah. Hi, hi, Alex. Uh, good to see you again, and uh, thank you so much for the service uh to our city. Um, first, I I would just like to ask you, um, in your opinion, what is the most exciting uh bike ped improvement coming down the pipeline toward council? What which should I get excited about seeing?
The preservation of the of the outdoor dining and walking area on Murphy Avenue. And in addition, there are, uh, well, there was already installed a zebra stripe. Um, I guess it's called a chaos crossing, in which one can cross on diagonals in front of Homestead. Um, and there is a plan to improve, well, it it hasn't been implemented in the city yet, but it's been discussed in the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee to change some of the triangular intrusions into El Camino so that a bicycle can can bicycle without moving into the car lane while on the on the far side of El Camino. This is particularly problematic where Murphy meets El Camino.
Oh, I see. All right. Well, thank you for giving me uh that range of good examples of of the good work that you all are doing. And I am looking forward to seeing all of those things. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Larson.
Hi, Alex. Good to see you again. And I was sorry, sorry to hear about your son's friend who was uh hit when riding a bicycle, hit by a car that was turning. And you said that it's really um increased for you the importance of um bicycle and pedestrian safety. Um, could you say more about how you um how that um changes or affects your um your thinking on the BPAC? How does that show up?
I had been thinking more about the the community in general. And this one focused my attention to the need to encourage students to bike while providing a a as much as possible guaranteed safe route to school. So then, I think there are two things that are that highlighted the um that are of importance now. One is the the bike rodeos offered by the police department once in a while to encourage kids to understand how and where to bike safely and how to how to look for dangerous situations in traffic. The second one is increased improvements in the bike routes that kids commonly use. One, in my mind, glaring hole is Hollandback, which feeds often Sunnyvale Middle and and um Cumberland Elementary. There are no good bike lanes on that, and the the vehicle speeds are quite high. And there is on-street parking pushing the bicycles into the traffic lane. So those those two elements, I think, um increased attention on routes commonly used for students to school and the the and the subsequent or concomitant attention and demonstration by police and and bicycle volunteers on to students how to bike safely. I guess the third leg would be, and we had a report in the in the Bicycle Commitment Committee last week uh by the Sunnyvale Police Department on the enforcement efforts. The enforcement report over the year. So that would be in a very important third leg to make sure that our traffic laws as existing are strictly enforced. Good. I would like to see a zero tolerance of speed limit above.
Great. Thank you. I I appreciate your your thoughts.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Dean.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and thank you so much for your service to the city thus far, and thank you for reapplying. Uh, my question is, when you look at, you know, other cities or agencies or places, uh, what are some techniques, ideas, uh, infrastructure, policies, et cetera, that you're seeing that you think this uh, the city of Sunnyvale could learn a thing or two from?
Two places come to mind. One, my experience living as a student in Freiburg, Germany, where bicycle was my sole mode of transportation. And for all of the students there as well, um, there is a very widespread and developed bicycle infrastructure, providing oftentimes separate bike paths from the street akin to what you might see in the Netherlands. Perhaps that's a more familiar example. Um, we have the luxury of having, well, comparatively speaking, quite a lot of land here with wide streets. The streets in Europe are narrower. As a consequence, cars drive slower. So I think we could learn to narrow the streets, which forces cars to drive slower, especially when on a narrow street, two cars approach each other in opposite directions. And this would, this would benefit drivers in the sense of encouraging more people to bike, because I think that's really the ultimate goal, to make it more appealing to bike and less appealing to drive.
Of course. Thank you for your answer and thank you again for applying.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Councilmember Spitalary.
Oh, good evening. Thank you for applying.
Yes, just you again.
What, yeah, same here. Um, tell me about what your thoughts about improving pedestrian work and enjoying activities.
That is, that is equally important. And we are the bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee, not just bicycle.
That's why I asked the question.
Yep. And I see in particular, when I, for example, walk from my house near Washington Park to the farmer's market, um, that the the large turning radii of the corners where, say, Washington meets McKin- meets uh Matilda, allow cars to negotiate this corner at quite high speeds. So if we narrow, if we make the the corner much sharper compared to a very large radius turn, the cars will be forced to slow down as they make this corner. And this this makes it for a pedestrian quite scary to have a car coming very quickly around the corner when, for example, the pedestrian is waiting there. So and what we need to think of ways of decreasing the speeds of cars when they're in proximity to pedestrians and increasing the appeal of walking in the city. And this this can be done by modifying the streetscape to make it more pleasant, plant more trees. For example, walking under the the shade is much more pleasant than walking.
the shade is much more pleasant than walking in the in the hot summer sun, and providing better crosswalk opportunities. This could be, for example, in the midspan of a very long block, as exists to get across the Fremont Avenue by Fremont High School, or and various sections on El Camino. So more opportunity to cross, more pleasant environment for walking, and slower speeds for cars at corners. I think these these would help make walking more appealing in the city.
You already answered my second question when you talked about paths between intersection. I understand, I understand, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And and, you know, I just want to say thank you, Alex. Thank you for your service and and obviously your analytical qualities of evaluating kind of solutions as well as what makes what makes for a a better pedestrian and bike infrastructure safe from a safety standpoint, what makes it better for bikes and pedestrians, I think, is really valued from just the general operation of the of the of the BPAC. The Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission itself. What do you what's your take on that operation and working with staff over the last year or so that you've been on there?
I'm impressed by the the quality of the presentations that we receive. So in the in the beginning, I missed that it's quite it's it's valuable, maybe in the first one or two meetings, I I missed the importance of reading the the agenda items in advance. And so I was I was taken a little by surprise by the presentations, but then once I began reading the presentation and looking ahead at the minutes, then I could prepare questions and ask much more relevant and and in-depth questions of the of the staff and other guest speakers. So that that to me, I think, really made the committee more valuable and also the discussion among the committee members. There are, I'm often surprised by the insights that others have. So this, the as a collective, we're much more valuable than as individuals. That's that's reinforced.
And I appreciate that comment, and and definitely that's one of the things that, you know, staff that and that's why we have our commissions to to hear different perspectives and, you know, staff creating very detailed reports to try to make it as easy as possible to have that mind think, to have all the all the questions and answers that that make the ultimate recommendations or sometimes decisions, depending upon what it is, that much better at the end of the day. So so I appreciate that.
I think that's working. It could perhaps be done better when when there are decisions to be made to have a clear statement of what needs to be decided and what is what is it that the council is looking for in terms of input on a particular issue.
Okay, good, good, good to know. So thank you for going through the process this evening. You know, a final decision will be made on Tuesday, May 24th, and the city clerk will then contact you after that meeting to inform you of the final outcome. So Alex, thank you for being here.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me again. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Have a good evening. City Clerk, we're ready for our next candidate.
I've been zoom bombed already.
Hi, Leah. How are you doing?
So. Good evening, everyone.
Good seeing you. Thanks for your time on your service on BPAC and and of course for reapplying. I'll take a moment to explain the process. Each council member has an opportunity to ask you a question. The interview is scheduled for 15 minutes, so please keep that in mind when answering questions. And first up is Councilmember Larson.
Thank you, soon as I can find the mute button. Good to see you again, Leah. So now that you've been on the commission for four years and you have a very good understanding of the processes and how the city works and how how to get things done. If someone would come to you, member of the public, they have an idea for a specific bicycle or pedestrian improvement, maybe a bike lane or a crosswalk change or something, and they want to bring it to the city. What advice would you give them about how to approach the city and frame their idea?
Um, well, there's there's two parts of that process. One is, you know, clarifying what their concern or issue is, whether it's related to safety or whether it's related to convenience, whether it's something that might already be on the active transportation plan or the, you know, the the list of issues we already have noted. And of course, I'd help them find that out. And then the second half would be explaining the study issue process. And with very few exceptions, it's 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 a slow, it's a slow climb to get things done because the study issue process of its own, even if the issue is approved, never mind the fact that, you know, the study issue can be rejected, that it it takes two years just to get that study issue review process completed. And then eve after that, then we begin the process of, okay, if it if the study issue has been done and and the recommendation is to move forward, because again, at the time that the study issue is completed, the recommendation can be just continued at that point. And so there are a lot of points in the process where the request can be rejected. And so that's something that needs to be explained to them that, you know, they prioritize, how things are prioritized. But also that if it's a really good issue, that see if there are ways that we can get you know, once the study issue is reviewed, you know, help them figure out resources for like how it might fall under under grants or so forth. So I guess the big thing would be explaining to the person that welcome to, welcome to the study issue process. It's going to take a while to get what you want, but we will do our best to assist you in 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 clarifying how it's done and and do our best to forward it if we think it's something that's really important and and valuable and really good to, you know, bring forward to the city council.
Great. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Dean.
Thank you, and it's great to see you, Leah, and thank you. So I'm enjoying my colleagues here saying this. Thank you so much for your service to the city thus far, and then also to North Sunnyvale. I think we're all the better for it. My question is, you know, in your time on the commission and as you think about the choose of bicycle pedestrian work that the city does, what's one approach to those issues that you would like this to see the city do differently?
Well, I really, there there's two things. One is the personnel resources that we have available for addressing the proposed study issues that we do bring up. It's it things are getting tighter and tighter because there are always conflicting demands on city personnel. I understand that. But I'm concerned with the Transportation Department because it is relatively small, and it seems like the number of people that are actually available to assist in doing things is is already stretched to the limit. So I'm wondering with the fact that we have certain goals with respect to the Active Transportation Plan and the Climate Action Plan and so on, and also construction things come up that have transportation elements in them, bike and pedestrian elements, how much how much of that resource is being utilized? And then the second thing is that I'm wondering how other cities do it, you know, other cities of similar size. Do they have the same processes we do in terms of the whole study issue thing, or do they have? Have they developed something more streamlined? I'd like to know. And if possible, I think that it would be wise to look at other processes and see if there's something better out there, or if not better, at least more something that has fewer steps for denial forwarding than than the process that we currently have. Because the last thing we want is our citizens to feel like that we do nothing.
No, thank you for your answer, and I think those are definitely pain points that us and many, you know, advocates are seeing across the city, so it's good to hear them. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next is Councilmember Spitaleri.
Good evening. Nice to see you.
Good evening. You're a little bit muffled, so.
Am I? Okay.
Yeah, that's better. You're you're up where your mic is now.
All right. Thank you. What question I ask another person because of part of the commission during the profession. What do you see or what do you think can be done to improve that, say, along the El Camino?
To improve, I'm sorry, what?
Pedestrian walkability and safe walkability along the El Camino.
Uh, well, the number one would be reducing the number of driveways along the route because driveways are conflict points for pedestrians and for vehicles as well. And so, you know, making the sidewalks, of course, wider, more like a boulevard rather than, you know, narrow strips, and of course, making it contiguous, because I don't think it's necessarily contiguous across El Camino Real. The other thing is the, obviously, we have very long blocks along El Camino Real, and that maybe we need to look at mid-block crossings that are tunneled under or go over El Camino to prevent the temptation for pedestrians to cross mid-block because, you know, they have to walk a half a mile or a quarter of a mile or more to get to an intersection that's controlled. You know, those those are some of the things that I'm concerned about. And also that when we, I I realize that we're we're a city that's bisected by roads we don't own, basically. And so, you know, we have to deal with the state with respect to El Camino Real, and but I think that any improvements that are made into intersections that are considered have to be considered with prioritizing them for pedestrians first rather than vehicles necessarily. So before we add, say, you know, a left turn lane or or something else that we should consider the safety of pedestrians first in terms of like, there need to be pedestrian islands, there needs to be light timing that's friendlier to pedestrians. We need to shorten the the length that pedestrians use to cross because, let's face it, El Camino is the most dangerous, you know, route we have that cuts through our city in terms of the percentage of, you know, accidents and injuries. And so we should always, if we want to reach our Vision Zero goals, we need to be looking at that very seriously.
Thank you very much. Very good answer. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Leah, as far as as far as the operation, and you talked about the study issue process, but but as far as the operation of the commission itself and working with staff, what what's your takeaway as far as that over your last four years?
It's it's been kind of a mixed bag. I mean, I'm very glad we we get to see things, but sometimes we get to see things, you know, late in the process. You know, that's that has been an improvement somewhat, but it's like when there's like a development process, I know part of the newer development process is looking at pedestrian access and safety and everything else along those processes, but we don't get a chance to review that, that that most of the time that doesn't come to us to to review or or approve. And the other thing is the fact that we are just an advisory body so that, you know, our input can be, you know, you know, accepted or rejected, you know, ad hoc. So, you know, I don't know how, I mean, I hope I would hope our recommendations carry weight because we do consider things very carefully, but in all honesty, I don't know. And then, you know, the the other primary thing is the fact that of the issues that we propose, we're lucky if we get one approved.
And so, so, so I'll.
So that's kind of small potatoes.
And I'll speak for all council, you know, I think I think we definitely take your, all of our commissions, their input and their recommendations very highly and, you know, and and not that we can do everything that that our commissions want, and that's the thing about the study issue process. Sunnyvale is very unique from a study issue process of having resident proposed, let's say, new projects or new efforts. And there is a bandwidth issue of basically what are we going to add to our plate every year? So I understand very few things make it through, but that, you know, you consider from the grand scheme of things, we have a lot of things that we're doing, whether or not it's implementing things that we've already, you know, already given direction on, like our 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 action or not climate, well, climate action plan, but also our our, you know, transportation plan to make sure that things are implemented. So yes, I totally understand. You're not the only one I've heard that from, and and yes, I wish we had a lot more money to make to increase that bandwidth. So so thank you for that. And next up is Vice Mayor Cisneros.
Hi, Leah. It's good to see you. Pleasure. And my question is, like, you know, you've been on the commission for four years, so you've seen a lot of meetings. Seen a lot of things, a lot of things have happened in the city in the last four years.
Yeah.
Going back through your memory, what is the most or one of the most memorable and exciting items or meetings that you participated in, and why did it stand out to you?
Well, the ones where the community actually gets involved really pleased me. Unfortunately, it's usually on subjects which are upsetting to people such as the crossing, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting the cross street now because there have been so many things, but when when the the issue with with the injured child in the school zone, and then there was a community action on, you know, a crosswalk issue. That that was, you know, very gratifying. I, when I talk to people in the public square, most of them don't even know what the BPAC is. So, and and so they don't realize that there is a Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, because I do talk to a lot of people, you know, when I'm down at the farmer's market and stuff like that, and most of them have no idea what, I mean, even my neighbors, you know, in the park here, it's like they don't know what a BPAC is and what we do and everything else. And so you know, it it's kind of challenging. I want I want more public input, but getting that public input is hard. You know, we we get we we get the, you know, people who know we exist, they send us the emails or we get the emails forwarded to us. But I think if there were more public awareness and involvement, it would be more gratifying rather than just the public and awareness involvement when we do something like takeaway parking for a bike lane or something like that.
Yeah, and Mayor, may I ask a follow-up question? Leah, do you have any idea? That is something that I think resonates through all of our board and commissions, right? It's just the fact that people don't know that they're there as both, you know, as a public resource and also something, you know, an additional avenue for engagement. Do you have any ideas of what the city can do to increase awareness and engagement? And like you said, get people involved more, not just in the oh, no, I'm really mad, and so I found somewhere to go, which is, you know, an important function, but also contributing, you know, ideas and and just more engagement. What do you think?
Maybe if there were at the Saturday farmers markets, if there was like a a local government booth setup, you know, a pop-up that, you know, had like, I don't, I want to, I don't want to say mini lessons, but something to that effect, like an educational booth about your local city government and would educate the people that were at the farmer's market who were interested about what was go what what actually exists in Sunnyvale government, what goes on, you know, what the various commissions and and things like that do. And the other thing is is that I think that the information about all the commissions kind of gets buried in the governmental website. You know, I I don't see like a, you know, a planning commission Facebook page, or I don't see, you know, a planning commission, you know, Instagram or anything like that. The Public Library and the Arts Council are fairly active. But still, you know, it's it's just getting eyeballs. And so we live in the land of of internet, I internet, you know, in the heart of Silicon Valley. So I I just think there just needs to be a a better design to the city webpages in terms of pointing them to the resources of the boards and commissions. And, you know, we do, we get to do a mailer once a year, that's it, you know, kind of thing. Otherwise, we're not out there. But I think having like a sort of public education booth might be one way to go. You know, or having a municipal fair every year, you know, that the city holds a municipal fair and that people get to meet all the departments in the city, you know, public safety, everybody, you know, the city council mayor and and have it be like, you know, a and, and have it be like, uh, you know, a party kind of thing. I don't know if that would be within our budget, but that might be something that we could do with educational, you know, um, dollars that we get from grants, various grants.
Well, I'll tell you, I think that sounds like a blast. I don't know. I don't know the feasibility or anything, but I really appreciate those ideas. Um, it, it's really important to just keep thinking about that. And, uh, I appreciate you calling that out here and, and for, uh, elaborating.
Yeah, we did something like that in our company where we had like a benefits fair where all the benefit providers would have booths set up. And then we'd also have, you know, various entertainments and raffles and things like that. And that was just to educate the employees about what they had. Cause you know, people don't know that there is a, an EAP plan or that who their, um, 401K thing is, you know, kind of thing. And I think the city could do the same thing. Why not have a civic fair?
Thank you, Leah.
Thank you.
And, and, and thank you for, for that. Definitely. We, we hear the same thing from council. It's getting people to not just know what our boards and commissions are, but what our council is doing, uh, on a weekly basis. So I totally understand that. Um, thank you for, you know, applying. A final decision will be made by city council on Tuesday, May 24th. And then the city clerk will contact you after that meeting to inform you of the final outcome. So thanks for joining us this evening.
Okay. Oops. Sorry. So it was a cat distraction, but thanks. Bye.
Thank you. Goodbye. Uh, at this time, council will take a four-minute recess and we will reconvene at eight oh five, eight fifteen PM. See you in a few minutes.
Um, I believe it's untitled, uh, I want to say Greg Goldberg, uh, which is a fantastic, uh, piece of art. And of course, our city having over 150 pieces of art within our city, uh, on the art walk. Um, my goodness, I, I'm moved by many of them.
Now, I, I think we definitely have a diverse selection of art across the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Councilmember Spitalary.
Good evening. Thank you for applying. Thank you. I'm not too much on art. I'm educated, educated myself. Um, but sometimes I, I have a wonderful time and 10 to 15 minutes time to interpret some of the art that we have around the city. Uh, always interesting. Uh, what do you see and, and what do you think, uh, we can do, uh, to encourage and approve more art around our city, not just because we have a development, but areas that, that are lacking certain visual, um, sites.
Uh, thank you, Tony. Um, my goodness, I'm, I'm a second generation Sunnyvale resident. Um, and it's so, um, I, I have to put the plug in, uh, being a Sunnyvale, um, San Miguel neighborhood association member. And of course, the amazing Fair Oaks Park renovation, uh, which I am so proud of. Um, there is, of course, new opportunities for art within our, our incredible new park. And being advocate for the arts, I even though, uh, as you stated, you're not necessarily into the arts, but, uh, seeing the, the kids, uh, seeing their, um, uh, connection to, to the arts. Um, my daughter, I, I know I'm really old all of a sudden. Uh, my daughter was in a play at Sunnyvale Theater on Remington, and she's graduating from Hofstra University next week. So seeing the transformation with the kids, um, and especially which is coming up very soon. Uh, I'd have to look at the calendar, but the hands-on art for the kids, um, seeing their involvement in it. And if there was one area, I would say our new park, which is amazing, um, to, to add a little more art, more for the kind of whimsical for the kids, uh, just to, um, maybe incite a little excitement, uh, in their, um, looking at art, of course, and enjoying it, and maybe transfer that into their involvement.
I, I think that's very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Thank you. And Richard, for just your sake, Hands on the Arts is actually this weekend, uh, so this Saturday.
Thank you, sir.
And 10 to three. And so that's the standard Hands on the Arts events for the kids, uh, with kind of a multicultural fix this year. So, so there, there'll be basically lots of dance and, and music, uh, basically highlighting the diversity that Sunnyvale, uh, so hopefully you'll be able to attend or tell your neighbors to attend.
Oh, absolutely. Um, I, um, thank you for bringing that up, by the way. I knew it was pretty close. I'd have to look at my calendar, but, um, seeing of course, um, being a little jealous with my daughter, but of course, seeing all of the kids and their excitement. And then I think, uh, we have such an incredible city with diversity, of course, but seeing the kids, um, just blossom, if you will. Um, and especially I went last year, um, or no, I believe it was the year before. Um, and then last year I was diving in the, the Keys down in Florida. Um, but seeing that involvement with the kids is, um, gosh, so valuable to our city.
Yeah. Thank, thank you for that. And, and do you have, so you're, you're a photographer. Do you have any other art that you do, you know, painting or sculpture or whatever?
Absolutely. Do, do some painting, um, and some ceramics as well.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that. Uh, next up is Vice Mayor Cisneros.
Yes. Uh, thank you so much, Richard. It's a pleasure to meet you. Uh, I appreciated, uh, reading your application. And, uh, something that stood out to me is that you were able to access the arts through our, uh, wonderful community college system. So that, right, uh, uh, real proud of them. And so in terms of accessibility for the different kind of programs we offer, how, how do you think we can engage not just small kids, but also, you know, maybe college age students or adults into our art programming?
Um, gosh, I'm, I'm honored that you said that, number one, and thank you. Um, I, I even see in, in, gosh, I'm one of the old people now, uh, and, and I mean that jokingly, uh, but seeing the connection with even the art, uh, the photography program in Sunnyvale and seeing some of the wide variety of ages, excuse me, even old people like myself. Um, and their connection with our community, joining our photography club in Sunnyvale. But, um, gosh, I see the arts and I think we can make this connection with the children all the way to some of the senior living facilities here in our city, um, which would be an amazing, seeing the kids' excitement, uh, seeing that, um, connection to, uh, some of the seniors in our community.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I appreciate that answer. I, I think you're right. We do need to make sure, you know, it, it's good to be thoughtful about the Adrianews we do and, and not to leave anyone behind. So thank you very much again.
Thank you. And next up is Councilmember Larson.
Hi, Richard. Good to see you. Thank you for applying. Um, so, so I'm curious about, um, are any arts commission meetings that you have attended? Um, what was discussed there? What was your, um, experience as, as someone who was in the audience? And things that maybe might have helped it work better?
Uh, that is a wonderful question. Um, I, I think at times, um, the arts kind of gets lost, but I think as for our city, uh, in particular Sunnyvale, of course, um, is very, is, is an amazing connection with art within our city. And like I mentioned, uh, of course, our art walk, um, over 150 different pieces of art, ranging the, the full gamut, um, from murals to statues to whimsical, um, gosh, uh, seeing the, what our art commission has done for our city is, my goodness, um, something I'm very passionate about, absolutely. But, uh, something that our city has put great, uh, great importance in. And, um, I believe at the meeting that I was at, we're talking about the, uh, two sculptures down by the quad, uh, which would be, uh, right off of Murphy Street, of course. Um, but just seeing the passion even within the, uh, the community and that translating into our city council, which I, I'm somewhat biased, but I was so proud, um, to be a resident of a, a, such a amazing city that put art in so importantly in our community.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that feedback. It's good to hear.
Thank you. And next up is Councilmember Dean.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I think, did I ask my question?
Oh, actually no, sorry. Yes, you are correct. I'm, I'm.
I was.
I had to change my script a lot tonight because we have several council members missing. Sorry about that. Uh, so Richard, thanks for applying, uh, a final decision we made on May 24th. And the city clerk will contact you after that meeting to inform you of that final outcome. Thanks for being here.
Thank you so much and, and wonderful talking to all of you. Um, I have to say, uh, again, how proud I am of my city, uh, proud to be a resident and proud of what the city council is doing for our, in our community, uh, and connecting the young to the old. Um, I'm just very proud of that.
Thank you very much, Richard. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. And city clerk, we're ready for our next candidate.
And your next candidate, Divya, has been promoted to panelist.
Hi, Divya.
Hi.
Welcome. Uh, I'm Sunnyvale Mayor Larry Klein. Thanks for your interest in applying to the arts commission. I'll take a moment to explain our process. Each council member will have a chance to ask you a question and the interview scheduled for 15 minutes. So please keep that in mind when you're answering those questions. And first up to ask a question is Councilmember Spitalary.
Sure.
Give me a minute. I feel like if you, I've lost your clue chip for some reason. Let's see if it's 15 seconds. Sorry, it's too late.
Do you want, want us to come back to you, Tony? Up to you.
Yeah. Why don't you do that? Because for some reason I don't have the application.
Okay. Go ahead and raise your hand when you're ready and we'll come back to you. Come back with you. Uh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Uh, let me go ahead and, and, uh, ask my question. So, so thank you for your application and, uh, talking about, you know, your interest in, in different arts. Uh, from a city standpoint, you know, what type of art would you like to see more of?
Um, I would like to see more of, uh, because I'm more onto the performing side. So I would like to see more of diversity and more of performing art sites because I have, uh, as many told already, I have seen the wonderful art being displayed over in the city and everything. But, um, when I see, I mean, I'm here from almost, uh, 16 years here in Sunnyvale. But, um, like the hands-on the art festival and all those things, but we are, we are never aware of or being invited or, you know, uh, those kind of performing arts is something which I was not, uh, seeing the much connection here. Of course, some things in the Sunnyvale library happens, but not much on even because Sunnyvale has a wonderful theater of 200, uh, seater theater. And, uh, I remember my son going for watching the, um, um, the play and all due with the school through the field trip and so on. But I don't see such kind of activities much happening. Um, or maybe I have, I've been ignorant, but I don't see that much here is what I, I thought maybe. I would like to see more on the performing art side.
Okay. And, and, and definitely that's a direction that council has given staff, you know? Uh, so we, so the Hands on the Arts that's this coming Saturday is also a, a cultural festival highlighting music and dance. And so more performance art at the end of the day, uh, beyond just hands-on the arts of hand crafts and, and what kids are doing. So, so definitely it's something that, that has been brought up previously and we're trying to get that, more of that into the community. So thank you for that answer. Uh, next up is Vice Mayor Cisneros. Next up is Vice Mayor Cisneros.
Hi there, and it's great to meet you. Thank you so much for your application and for the passion you bring to this um, this work. It's very evident from your uh, work history and what you do outside of this. And I just wanted to get a sense, um, you're you do so much work in art. Like what what drove you to want to um, bring your expertise to the city level in addition?
As I already told, you know, Sunnyvale is one of my favorite cities because from the time I have stepped into this country, all the sixteen years, I'm only on nine four zero eight five, eight six and eight seven. So um, that's so much of love towards the city. And I see many of my performing arts circle people, they are serving their city on Cupertino and San Ramon, Fremont. So many of my friends who are serving on the Art Council there, so they really inspired me. So that I I could just put me a sense that, oh, I'm there here for sixteen years. And maybe I it's time for me also to step in and do my service to the city. And that's something which I was thinking. I always wish to do that. Maybe this was much right time because my son is also grown up and so on. So um, I thought this is the right time to get in and do my service to the city.
Wonderful. And and yeah, I did notice too, uh, you have friends who are engaged civically around art. And I and I think that's really great that that's part of your community as well and and one of those values. So thank you very much for bringing that uh, perspective to the application.
Thank you. And we'll go back to Councilmember Spitalary.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for applying and want to clarify about city structure and bringing awesome great uh, traditional talent. I understand you're, I read that you're a musician.
Yeah, I'm a musician.
And and what instrument do you play?
I I I'm majorly a vocalist, so I sing Carnatic vocal. And I do play a little of uh, Vena and so on, but that is very basic level. But my main profession is as a vocalist.
So you want to bring uh, more the cultural aspect to assume in with Arts Commission stuff?
Yeah.
And have you, have you done this before someplace else?
Um, my my family in India also is much into arts and my mom is an actress. And so we have been seeing a lot of um, uh, performing arts in my family. And I was one of the uh, voice artists for the very famous Jungle Book, which used to be the TV series. So um, so there are, uh, I have been doing those things. And here, especially in Bay Area, I have so many of the other uh, temples here doing some uh, fundraisers and helping bringing the community uh, together. So and one more, uh, that that's one more interest here because in Sunnyvale, so much of diversity is there. I hear so much of music just behind my house, wonderful Mexican music. They keep playing. So I was like feeling, you know, oh, uh, it gives me an a little more uh, introduction to uh, see myself in much diversified taste of other arts.
And I appreciate the fact that you want to do that, that you have a very diverse community. And uh, all that culture in one way or another should be shared with everyone. So thank you for your thoughts and your ambition to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next up is Councilmember Larson.
Hi, Divya. Thank you for applying. Thank you for your very detailed and thorough application. It was very helpful to uh, read that and you clearly put a lot of time and thought into the application. I did notice that you um, have not had a chance to attend an Arts Commission meeting. So just wanted to hear what's your understanding of the role of the Arts Commission? And um, what you think you would bring to that or contribute?
I did not attend any Arts Commission meeting, but I, after kind of applying, I did go and do some research on the Google, seeing the recorded meetings, I think, which was doing some planning on for one of the festivals wherein they were trying to uh, figure out the logistics and all those uh, things. But as I already said, um, so even in those meetings, which I was seeing, it was more concentrated on like painting, drawing and those kind of um, things. So I was feeling that there need, there is a need for somebody of like, you know, to bring in a performing artistic art uh, kind of dimension to those meetings. And maybe, you know, and so many experienced people. So um, I was just feeling that, you know, it's it would be a great uh, thing to work with all these people. So that was my very first thought when I saw the Art Commission because so many um, wonderful uh, experienced people. So I was thinking, maybe I may fit in here and bring in my perspective of including the performing arts side more here.
Great. And I I'm glad that you did find the recordings and watched them. I I would actually count that as attending the meeting, even if it wasn't live. You've you still know what the the meetings are about and what they're like. So good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next up is Councilmember Dean.
Thank you. Uh, and Divya, it's a pleasure to meet you and thank you so much for applying. Uh, and also I appreciate how in your application and in your answers right now, you're really showcasing, I think, the importance of having multiple and diverse perspectives because I it's very easy to think about the Arts Commission in terms of visual arts and forget the performing arts aspect of it. And so I appreciate hearing that. My question is, you know, one of the primary functions of the Art Commission on top of all the things that we've discussed is as uh, new art pieces, installations, uh, murals, et cetera, are being proposed within the city or within new developments, the Arts Commission gives recommendations on which ones to select. And so uh, when you're, you know, choosing between them, what would be the framework you would try and use in assessing different works of art? And uh, you know, how you would think about them?
Definitely when I see an artwork, I would see, of course, um, there's a lot of workmanship which goes on and the thought of an artist behind wherein what is it conveying? And how uh, what kind of heritage is it going to be explaining? And um, how detailed and how easily visually also it can capture the, um, sorry for that. Sorry. Um, so um, so that is, uh, that is something which I would look into the details when I'm trying to assess the artwork.
Of course, thank you. And I don't need to apologize for that.
I'm really sorry.
Uh, I'm assuming it was a doorbell and I will say.
No, it's a doorbell.
It's it's essence of your dedication to music.
Give me a minute, please. Sorry. Just.
Of course, of course.
It's the world in which we live now, not a problem.
I think you're still muted.
I'm really sorry. I kind of made some arrangements, but still looks like they did not see my message.
It's okay.
Yeah.
But no, thank you for your answer. I appreciate it.
So I hope I answered your uh, question in the right uh.
You did.
Put my thoughts, whatever I was trying to explain.
I feel like you you answered it uh, as to what I, you know, the question I was looking for. So thank you.
Okay, uh, so so Divya, thank you for going through the process this evening. Final decision will be made by council on May twenty fourth. And you don't need to be part of that meeting to when we're voting. But the city clerk will then contact you after that meeting to inform you of the final outcome. So thanks for being here and and definitely I encourage you to to visit Hands on the Arts and the cultural festival this weekend.
I will do that.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
City clerk, we're ready for our next candidate.
Hi, your next candidate, Margaret, has joined.
Hi, Margaret.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for applying to the Arts Commission. Uh, I'll take a moment to explain our process. Each council member will have an opportunity to ask you a question. The interview is scheduled for about fifteen minutes, so please keep that in mind when you're answering our questions. And uh, I'm up first, so uh, thank you for for um, your application and your in your detailed uh, information. And so thank you for also giving back to the community as far as uh, Little League or or Little League, as well as most importantly, teaching art to students at Ellis Elementary. So thank you for doing that. Uh, do you have a favorite type of art? Or, you know, it's like a favorite medium that you like to work with as an artist?
Well, I would say most relaxing for me is a mix of watercolor or acrylic, or I just started doing, it's a French word, gouache, I think I'm pronouncing it right. But anything where you can just kind of um, do stuff relatively quickly without too many expensive materials or uh, planning. And it's also fun to do with kids as well. Um, if the colors are strong, whatever the kids do kind of quick and easy, it's amazing. So yeah, I I like those uh, just at home or with the kids at school.
That's fantastic. And and so let's talk about, you know, that medium. So we have a lot of different, you know, a lot of different artwork around the city. What do you have a favorite piece of art?
Oh, well, I love the statue at Sunnyvale Public Library, just for the engagement and memory factor. Probably it's the one I've seen the most engagement with. I mean, people taking photographs of it, people just having fun with it regardless of um, having a photograph. Uh, so that one's terrific. I do like the, um, I don't know if you would call the water tower and the Libby's fruit kind of art, but I feel like that's kind of like an artistic symbolic landmark. That's really great. I like the labyrinth on Plaza del Sol, if you call that art as well, to see people once they figure out that it is a labyrinth and it is kind of interactive, um, to see people doing the maze together. That's really fun. Anything that brings people in that sense of community and that sense of it being a special place. I think that's really the standout thing for me.
Thank you very much. Thanks for that answer. Uh, next up is Vice Mayor Cisneros.
Margaret, it's so good to see you.
Right.
And uh, uh, you you know this, I I'm a really big fan of applying human-centered design principles to civic processes. I think that's a really fascinating way to look at complex problems. And um, it's exciting what different groups are doing around that. How, what are some ways that you would bring that uh, that lens to the Arts Commission?
Yeah, well, I mean, I've seen that there's already been a lot of community engagement with the master plan document and how recent that was. And obviously, there was a lot of input, um, interest, ideas that came out of that from the community. That's a terrific base to work on. I think a next stage, going from that survey or kind of opening the gates up really wide and having a lot of voices come in, is having more hands-on, whether you call it prototyping or experimenting or design workshops to say, whether it's some of those themes that came out of the master plan, like how do we go where the people already are and develop more um, special Sunnyvale, bringing out the history of Sunnyvale, the diversity of Sunnyvale? Let's actually figure out what that could look like in practice. So um, taking the survey work as kind of the base, pulling out themes, then can we hold some hands-on sessions, whether alongside the farmer's market, at the library, at the community center, where we invite people, whether they're formal artists or they're interested members of the public, to start sketching, making, prototyping, or having multiple options there for voting. But kind of going from the survey method to then something a little bit more concrete and place-specific, where we say, we want to build downtown Sunnyvale city line, downtown area to be really distinctive. Here are some options for public art. Now let's either vote on it or let's do like a chalk version and see which one people like the best from that kind of quick, cheap chalk version, and then we can make that kind of thing permanent. But that's, I think, a way that we could use design methods to build that civic engagement and participation in the public arts um, kind of journey.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Um, that that's really necessary. And in terms of building that engagement, boards and commissions are always looking for, you know, I hear from boards and commissioners, ways that they can do that better. And and it's very exciting that you bring that lens to this. So thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Larson.
Hi, Margaret. Very nice to meet you and thank you for applying. You have a very broad and diverse uh, range of backgrounds and skills, uh, which is great. So I I um, was intrigued by a sentence in your application. You talked about researching um, various public art um, efforts and uh, looking at promising strategies and policy structures to make an area more vibrant. And I was hoping you could say more about what you learned there. And I kind of feel like your answer to the last question, the Vice Mayor's question, maybe got to some of that. But if there's more, would love to hear it.
Yeah, I think that's where the lawyer part of myself or someone who thinks about how people actually, people with ideas, people who are busy professionals, as many Sunnyvale residents are, but they have ideas or they have an activation spark. What if we could do this thing in my neighborhood? Or I would love to see more murals. If there is a clearer website explanation policy about how a motivated community member could follow along the process and either come to meetings, but also if they have a vision of, I would love to see a mural on the side of Target. And this is speaking from my own personal experience. Who makes the decision or how do I, as a citizen or a mom's group or a local school, know who to even approach as a decision maker? Is it Target? Is it the City Council? Is it the Arts Commission? Where do I start if I have this kind of idea? And then what are the rules that I would have to follow? So I can kind of get a quick check. Is this idea I have for making Sunnyvale better realistic at all? What would, um, who would I need to persuade or what would the process needed to follow? So when I see examples like in the city of Portland, Oregon, where they have a very clear document on the city government website that says, all right, if you want to see your roundabout on your street painted, here are the steps you have to follow. If you want to get free supplies, here are the suppliers that have agreed to give, you know, outdoor paints um, at a lower cost. Here's what you need to do to get your neighbors um, organized and get them to sign off on it. Here are the kinds of arts that are allowed or not. And it's basically then a five-minute application, once you, as a resident, have understood the rules and um, know kind of the limits or um, what kind of um, review you'd go under, then you can relatively easily put your application in front of the right decision makers. So um, that's the kind of process I'm thinking about. I mean, the city of Oakland also has a similar thing for residents painting their streets. So I'm not saying as a, that we have to paint the roundabouts or we have to paint streets, but those examples of very, very transparent policies and um, helping interested citizens know that they can get a community project off the ground, what the rules of the game are, how how long it would take to see that project to fruition. I think all of that can encourage more local residents or civic groups to then um, be part of making Sunnyvale more lively with arts.
Great, thank you. Those are really good suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Councilmember Dean.
Thank you. Uh, hi, Margaret. It's a pleasure to meet you. I really enjoyed reading through your application. And I mean, I, you're clearly extraordinarily credentialed and it's exciting to see the work that you're doing with the D School at Stanford. Uh, and I appreciate it, actually, the point that you made about uh, thinking about filling the blank spaces and some of the developments that are happening through murals or constructions of art on fences, et cetera. My question, you know, similar to what I've asked other applicants is, when you look back through historical movements or periods of art, what's one that really speaks to you? And how do you see that framework as helping the city of Sunnyvale's approach to art?
Yeah, well, I did my undergraduate in Chicago. And um, I I was probably seventeen years old when I was a freshman there. And what stuck with me was the amount of murals, especially on the west side in the Mexican-American area of Chicago, how the history, the stories, the politics, like it was so much on the walls. It was amazing to see, and it's all for free, right? And it's a destination where I would take two buses from Hyde Park on the south side of Chicago to go to this neighborhood to just see all of this civic pride, this um, history, all of it. But clearly people had cared so much and um, put in to make and maintain and to, it was kind of a living neighborhood. And that kind of spirit is just amazing. And I've seen it in other cities too. And obviously, San Francisco has an amazing mural culture. And that's one of the things, I mean, as a Sunnyvale resident, I have so much pride. And, you know, going to the History Museum, it's terrific to see all of that history and then meeting all these different kinds of families and different folks. Sunnyvale is just an amazing place to live and so much diversity, so much history. So how do we see that in our downtown, in our different kind of neighborhood zones? That's where I see that there's so much potential. And I think, see, reading through all of the comments in the master planning document, I think so many. I think so many residents also have that same wish to show that pride and that civic identity off through kind of more of that place-making kind of murals or art or other things.
Definitely. I'm enjoying hearing the passion come through and how you're answering it. And I think that resonates a lot with me. And I actually visited Austin for the first time recently. And similarly, the amount of murals on the buildings just sticks out at you immediately. And I think creates such a sense of place. So thank you for your application and for your answers.
Thank you. And finally, we have Councilmember Spitalary.
Good evening. Nice meeting you. Thank you for your applying. I like the collection of art that you have behind you also. I love your enthusiasm. I think it's fantastic. And I really like how you present yourself as far as engaging our community. One of the things that I can really need to know is that one, we do have an art commission. And two, that we have people similar to you that want to be out in the community and get them excited about art, no matter what they do and how they do it, whether they're painting utility boxes or fire hydrants or putting a mural on the wall. I think it says a lot about it for me, if it's done right and presented right. And encourages people to take pride in your city and then want, have them want to be part of developing, and even maybe like yourself, a commission. But thank you very much. I read your application. It's outstanding. A lot of the questions that you asked, they're similar to what I was thinking about. But I really don't have any questions. I just wanted a compliment on your enthusiasm and your thoughts and the way you want to approach everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. And I just want to say, you know, thank you for definitely your passion in art. It's really come through in the discussions. A final decision is going to be made by City Council on May 24th. You don't have to be at that meeting when we're voting, but the city clerk will then contact you after that meeting to inform you of the final outcome. And thanks for being here this evening.
Yep. Thank you for all your questions. Have a nice evening, everyone.
Okay. Good night.
Bye.
City Clerk, we're ready for our next candidate?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Edna is moving over to the panelist role. Okay, looks like Edna is ready to go.
Hi, Edna.
Hi, everybody.
I'm Sunnyvale Mayor Larry Klein. Thanks for joining us this evening and applying to the Arts Commission, or to two boards, actually. Let me take a moment to explain our process. Each council member will have an opportunity to ask you a question. The interview is scheduled for about fifteen minutes, so please keep that in mind as you're answering your questions. And first up is Vice Mayor Sisneros.
Let's find the unmute button. Hi, Edna. It's a pleasure to meet you and thank you so much for applying. I just wanted to ask, were you able to watch any of the pre-recorded meetings or attend any Arts Commission meetings, either before or after you sent your application?
I just joined about five minutes ago. That's all.
Ah, okay. And so, building off of that, what do you think you can uniquely offer to the commission in terms of your perspective or what your goals would be when you join?
Okay, I come from the world of poetry, literature and poetry. And I'm interested in multilingual approach, multicultural and multilingual approach to literature. And I was thinking about several things. One is to start an online magazine, which will publish the works of, the poems of Sunnyvale residents in their native tongue and in English. And this way, get access to the variety and the diversified expressions of the residents. That's one thing that I had in mind. The other thing is that I would like to see on billboards, some of the poems of people who live in, who reside in Sunnyvale, on billboards for everybody to read and maybe even in their native tongue and in English. These are the main points that I wanted to make. There, it would be simpler just to have their poems published anyway. But I think that the multicultural, multilingual approach is very unique to me. And I have been a co-editor of such a magazine for the last four years. My native tongue is Hebrew. I'm from Israel. You could see, you could learn that from my accent, probably. And I've been doing that for the last four years. I have a multicultural, multilingual magazine online in Hebrew and in eleven different languages. And I find it most interesting. And we could have events in which people come from the various different tongues and recite their poems in their native tongue and in English. And this way, we create a new community, a community that speaks many languages, but still is very, very united.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for sharing that with us and giving us some insight into your perspective and what you'd hope to accomplish on the commission. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Larson.
Hi, Edna. Very nice to meet you and thank you for applying. I'm interested in what drew you to apply for a Sunnyvale Commission? How did you hear about it and what, like, what was the spark that intrigued you to apply?
Okay. I've just become an American citizen last year. I've been residing here for many years, but I just became a citizen about a year ago. And I feel that I would like to contribute something, not only get, but something to contribute. How did I hear about it? I must tell you the truth. I wrote something to Mayor Larry Klein and he replied. And then I decided to look up his page. And on the page was the post about the different opportunities. And that's, that's it.
Wonderful. Great. It's always fun to hear how people find out about our boards and commissions, because there are so many different ways that people do learn about them. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Dean.
Thank you. And hi, Edna. It's a pleasure to meet you and thank you so much for applying. And congratulations on recently becoming a citizen. And I think your story of how you found the commission and got into it is, you know, inspiring and uplifting. I appreciated in reading your application, your mention of poetry, because I found it to be a really creative and innovative form of art that's not usually mentioned in the context of the city. And, you know, a comment I had made actually earlier tonight, one of the other applicants, was how it can be easy to sometimes think about the Arts Commission only in terms of the visual arts. So I appreciated that aspect of it. One question I have is, you know, obviously, an important aspect of the commission is when there are new artworks being proposed within the city, new developments that had installations, et cetera. The commission gives recommendations to the council on which works and which artists to select. What would be your framework for assessing different kinds of visual art or statues or installation-based artwork?
Okay, you're taking me out of my comfort zone. I see. Okay.
It's okay to answer it in the general. No need to get too specific either.
Okay, first of all, what is very important for me is a message. Something must have some sort of saying. I don't know what kind of a saying, but if it's just without any message, it's pointless. Art in general, beat poetry or the visual arts, or whatever it is, or installations, must have a saying. And the saying should be something that is unique to this community or is important, very important to this community. Maybe it's the unity, maybe it's the heritage. I didn't think about it, but I'm just talking out of my sleeve right now. So I really, but that's more or less, what is very, very important for me is that it must have a message.
Of course. And you know what? If you hadn't mentioned that you were talking out of your sleeve, I think that answer was thoughtful enough that I would have thought you thought about it well before. So I...
Listen, I used to be a professor, a university professor. So I'm very used to saying things out of my sleeve.
Of course. I think it's, that is a very good point about the importance of having a message and what that message is. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next up is Councilmember Spitalary.
Evening, Edna. Thank you for applying. I really liked the fact that how you answered that when you said you're out of your comfort zone. And so what we heard is what you really feel and how you would do it and not to think about it or conjure up an answer to satisfy our question. And that's what I like to see from people who deal with art or any of the commission as well. They look for their own insight and how they really feel, because it really sends a strong message to the community. I like your concept of the poetry and different ways of expressing art. There are so many different ways of expressing art. And we heard some good suggestions tonight. So I really appreciate the fact of what you want to bring. I really appreciate the fact that you pushed to get on the commission by finding out how you do it and addressing our mayor. So they told me that you were definitely on a mission and you wanted to get here and you're here. And I really appreciate your answer to give to all of the council members. So thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm last. And Edna, thank you for actually following up on emails and reaching out. I, that's, I'm happy to hear that I helped at least publicize, you know, our boards and commissions. And thanks for applying. Definitely, your passion has come through as far as poetry is concerned and, you know, your background. So you applied to both the Art Commission and the Library Commission. Do you have a Board of Library Trustees? Do you utilize our library a lot? And if so, you know, we focus mainly on the arts, because that was your number one option. But while we have you here, what do you, what's your consideration of our library and our usage there?
Okay, I used to go very, very often. Unfortunately, Mrs. Corona or Mr. Corona, or whatever it is, prevented me from going to the library. I, I must say that I don't have the slightest idea right now. I want to be very, very open and say, I didn't expect you to ask me about the library, since I said it's number two. But if I come up with something, I might write you.
Definitely, definitely if you send a message to council@sunnyvale.ca.gov, it will go to all of us. So you can always, you can always follow up with other answers that you might have or other questions for that matter. So thank you for being here tonight.
One thing, of course, that I would do is have a very, a corner or a very important place for poetry in the library. That's because this is my passion. This is my passion, I must say. Okay?
And I appreciate that. It's great that if, you know, from a city standpoint, if we can, you know, encourage people's passion and focus it back into the community. So thank you for that. And thank you for, for, you know, applying and being part of this process this evening.
Okay, thank you for having me.
Thank you. And so, yeah, and a final decision we've made on May 24th. You don't need to be at that meeting when council meets and votes, but the city clerk will then contact you after that meeting to inform you of the final outcome. So thanks for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you and have a great evening.
You too. Bye-bye.
Goodbye. City Clerk, we're ready for our last candidate of the evening?
Mr. Mayor, DePauli has been promoted to panelist.
Hi, DePauli.
Hello.
Thanks for, good to see you again and thanks for reapplying the Personnel Board. I'll go ahead and explain the process, although you've been through it before. Each council member will have an opportunity to ask you a question. The interview is scheduled to last for fifteen minutes. So please keep that in mind as you're answering our questions. And first up is Councilmember Larson.
Hi, DePauli. Good to see you. Thank you for serving on the board and thank you for reapplying. I'm curious to know more about what you have learned about the needs of our Sunnyvale employees. You referenced that a little bit in your application. And if you could just expand on that?
I mean, the cases are obviously, I think, well, are they confidential? Some of them are.
Yeah, just in generalities.
Yes. I think certainly the board has definitely given me a lot more information, enlightened me about the interaction between the city and the employees, the disputes that arise. Some of those I might not even have anticipated. I have a deeper, it's difficult to, I don't want to go into the issues itself. But we clearly see issues in Sunnyvale that impact inclusion, equity, things I would not have anticipated were part of the disputes. And I also understand the precarious position that the city finds itself in. So it's been eye-opening. I think during my term, we've had it between three to five cases. It's really both sides of the issue and how the city tries to go through a very interesting process to make sure there's mediation, there's some sort of dispute settlement before we get to appeals. And then the other city attorney to guide us. So it's been, I do feel like I've been part of a process where I'm contributing.
Good, good. Thank you. That's helpful.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Dean.
Thank you. And thank you for your service so far to the city. And thank you for being interested in reapplying. I wasn't going to ask the same question as Councilmember Larson, but you ended up answering basically what I was going to ask about. So I appreciate your answer and don't have any follow-up questions. Thank you for applying to serve your city further.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Spitalary.
Good evening and thank you for your four years of service. Given that the Personnel Board is a closed session, I believe, when you're dealing with personnel matters, is that correct?
Well, some of the cases are open session. They can be elected as closed or open.
And so when you have an issue with a board, what do you, what do you look for without going into? How do you, how do you approach it?
So both sides present their arguments and we get a binder from both sides. I am an attorney by profession. I'm a lawyer. And I am typically used to be being on one side and being the one who's advocating for a position. For me personally, this has been very interesting, where I have to really think through as an arbitrator and look at both sides of the issue and weigh some of the pros and cons. I really try to make sure I focus on what's the law? How has the law been applied? What are the arguments by the city's attorney, by the opposing counsel? And I will bring some sort of my own understanding into fairness, how the dispute was resolved prior to it coming to the board. We also made these decisions as a group. So we have a lot of conversations, resolve issues with the city attorney, who will guide us, look to see the pulse of what my fellow Sunnyvale residents and citizens are thinking about. And then in the end, we all come to the decision that we think is the right decision. I'm... I'm, I would not try to reconcile my decision with others. It has to make sense to me.
And what type of work do you practice?
I practice immigration law, asylum and deportation.
Well, that was the only question I had and I appreciate the answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, and I actually have no questions. You know, I, I think, I, I thank you for those thoughtful answers that you've given already and definitely, you know, giving back to the Personnel Board. It is one of those boards that, that council doesn't really, you know, have that much interface with to a large degree. You know, it's like it, it's, we appoint you and hopefully that is a positive experience and, and I'm happy to see that you're actually reapplying from a certain standpoint. From a process standpoint, do you have anything that, and I know it's kind of closed, a lot of it's closed doors and, and you're kind of mediating, but, but just get a better idea of, um, from a process standpoint, how you feel about that board itself?
Um, you mean the process of?
The pro, the process you've been through or, or your, or your fellow, or your fellow commissioners for that matter?
I have a lot of respect for the fellow commissioners. They bring a lot of, uh, depth and, uh, a realization that the decisions we make impact somebody's life. Um, I think from a process point of view, there are times I wonder if maybe we had a little bit of an overview on how some of the legal issues were. That might help because after three to four hours of a hearing and then reality is, you know, by the time it's nine thirty, everybody wants to make a decision. And at that point, when we start the journey of how, what, what are the legal issues here and can we understand the technical side? Um, sometimes I do think maybe if we had every now and then a bit of training on, uh, administrative law, because that's how it gets applied there.
Right.
That might be helpful. Uh, but then again, so far it's worked out. Uh, nobody's really looked at their clock and said like watches that it's time to go home. So people do put in the entire effort.
No, and, and that's appreciated. You know, this is especially with this, this commission where we don't really have check-ins and we don't see really minutes and, and you know, we can't watch the video or things of that nature. So I appreciate that and definitely it's something I'll talk to the city attorney about because it is trying to make sure that our boards and commissions function as best as they can. And if there's additional training that's needed, that's something that we really need to know. So I appreciate, I appreciate that honesty and in trying to make it better for everyone. So, so thank you for that. Um, and next up is Vice Mayor Sisneros.
Yeah. Hi. Uh, it is so nice to meet you. Um, and thank you very much for, for your service to the city uh, on such complicated and extremely important matters. Um, I had the same question the mayor asked and I really appreciate your answer and your answers to all of the other, uh, council members. So I just wanted to say thank you and, um, really appreciate that you decided to reapply.
Okay. Uh, okay, DePauli. Uh, that's the last of our questions. Thank you again for reapplying. Uh, and you know, the final decision we made by city council on May 24th and the city clerk will actually contact you after that meeting to inform me the final outcome. But thank you for going through the process and, and joining us this evening.
Thanks so much for this and I guess good night. I'm the last panelist.
Yes. Well, we, we actually have a closed session after this, but have a good evening. Thank you.
Bye.
Good night. Okay. Um, moving forward, uh, council will now be going into closed session on a single agenda item on pending litigation. Uh, first we'll go to public comment. Uh, members of public will now have an opportunity to address city council on our closed session item. Members of public may also provide audio public comment by connecting to the teleconference meeting online or by telephone and use a raised hand feature request to speak, star nine on your telephone. City Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on our closed session agenda item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Uh, council will now adjourn to closed session. Uh, and then we can, we will return to this open session afterwards to provide a closed session report. See everyone a little bit later.
Okay, let's go ahead and reconvene our meeting at 10:01 PM. Vice Mayor, may we please have our closed session report? Actually, our vice mayor isn't here yet. Sorry. We should pause for a moment until we have Vice Mayor.
David, you may want to, I had to click on a couple of times for that link to get me back in. I don't know if anybody else experienced any issues with it.
There she is.
I see her.
Okay. Vice Mayor, may we please have our closed session report?
Yes, my computer froze. And so I'm on my phone now to finish this out. So I don't have, the agenda's not popping up for me. It's all frozen. That's very inconvenient.
Let me.
Would you mind reading the item number that we heard in the case?
Sure.
The record for me, ma'am? Thank you very much.
Let me pull that up. I pull up the right file. One moment. I will. Okay, yes, council met in closed session on item 22-0568. Conference with legal counsel pending litigation closed session filed pursuant California Government Code, Name of case, Arcata at Owl versus Pacific Gas and Electric.
And there is nothing to report.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight and going through the closed session and back. I'll see everyone again tomorrow evening. Good night.
Mr. Mayor, let me just state that it is now 10:03 PM. Hope you all have a good evening.